Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to Craven County Board of Commissioners' regular session for Monday, October the first, 2018. And I'd ask you to put all your phones on silent ring or turn them off, period. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Commissioner Tyson? Vice Chair Dacey?
Here.
Chairman Moore?
Here. Will we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for the prayer, please. Lord may your goodness and love be present amongst us today. Come bless our meeting with unity, hope, and vision. Build in us all the deep respect for one another so that our unity may be one. May your visions fill our lives as we seek to do your will and your name. Amen.
Amen. The Commissioners before you is an agenda that I'd ask you to take a look at because it's dated to you before the meeting. Make sure if there's anything in there that you want to add or just approve of.
Who's to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Chairman, if I may, I think it might be appropriate, Ms. Chairman, if we add under Item 6B mosquito spray and funding for the county, presentation by Ms. Scott Harrelson.
We have that on there.
But the original agenda that was sent out, that the citizens got, it did not have that, so I think we need to make them aware.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, John Robinson. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm John A. Robinson, Jr. I'm a resident of Craven County in Commissioner District Two at 1906 Cayenne Court in New Bern. I'm a retired Presbyterian minister who has worked in disaster relief and recovery as a volunteer or staff person for more than forty years. I'm the Vice President of the North Carolina Voluntary Organizations Active in Disaster and the Acting President of the Craven County Disaster Recovery Alliance. The fiduciary agent for the alliance is the United Way of Coastal North Carolina. Until two weeks ago, the alliance was working on those remaining homes that needed assistance from Hurricane Matthew, and we were collaborating with the Community Development Department to see that that happened. That work has not stopped and will continue until all those people are served. I have provided the clerk of the commission with the bylaws of the alliance along with some other information that you might find useful as you, as a commission, move forward in recovery following Hurricane Florence. First of all, CCDRA, Craven County Disaster Recovery Alliance, is a long-term recovery organization working in cooperation with the state of North Carolina, the North Carolina Voluntary Organizations Active in Disaster, and FEMA to provide a means for rebuilding for those who would not otherwise be able to recover without long-term recovery assistance. As part of the voluntary organizations' network, numerous faith-based and nonprofit organizations provide support for our work in recovery. You have already experienced some of those organizations that have come here for relief and emergency recovery. But those groups only represent about thirty percent of the national organizations who do work in disaster. The other seventy percent will be here as a part of our work through CCDRA. Second, we are not an emergency organization. We do only limited relief work through an unmet needs committee after Mr. Kite and the Emergency Management Agency have finished their work. However, we would appreciate having a continuing collaboration with Mr. Kite, who has been to CCDRA meetings and, as a matter of fact, made a very fine presentation at our preparation workshop in June at St. Paul's Church. Churches in this area have already been gearing up for the long road ahead to recovery. Thirty-six people representing a broad range of organizations and communities have already met to organize in response to the need in Craven County for this latest disaster. One has decided to turn their educational building into a volunteer work team hosting site, providing a place to stay for volunteer work teams with showers, beds, access to a kitchen, secure locations to store tools, trailers, and supplies, and access to work. Strategically, it is located on Old Cherry Point Road in Jame City. It will be convenient to Havelock and other areas of the county. This will be a permanent hosting site. It will serve forty to sixty volunteers a week who will come here to help our citizens rebuild. Other churches are preparing to host volunteer work teams on a short-term basis. An experienced group of seventeen from Richmond will be here Sunday, prepared to do muck and gut throughout the whole week. They will be staying at the West New Bern Presbyterian Church. I'm here tonight to make you aware of the work of CCDRA and the voluntary agencies of the county and to ask you to designate a voluntary agency liaison to be a part of the alliance meetings to ensure adequate coordination between the county and the alliance as the long-term recovery goes forward. Effective long-term recovery is a partnership among survivors, insurers, government agencies, and voluntary organizations. There are national voluntary organizations that specialize in helping communities recover from disaster who are preparing to come to Craven County as soon as there is a viable long-term recovery organization to help coordinate their work. There are three things that are necessary for recovery: money, volunteers, and coordination. When any one of those disappears, the recovery stops. In the days to come, CCDRA will be setting up public forums, case management processes, and committees to help assist those most in need. No one agency or group can provide all that needs to be done, and that is why it is so vital that we be able to work together closely on this recovery. The watchwords of the voluntary organizations active in disaster movement are collaborate, communicate, coordinate, and cooperate. I'm just asking that we be allowed together to do these four things as the recovery goes forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed Griffin?
Amen. God bless you. Ray Griffin, Vasspor, 1981, Pittsburgh Road. But anyhow, I rode through New Bern and blessed the heart of soul, all the devastation just makes you want to cry and all the things that happened. And I said, I got my wishes, wish one time. Remember, I told everybody here that I wish every joint in New Bern closed down, there be some peace on Saturday, Sunday. At least God got that wish through city down there. They're all closed down now for a while, and they got to rebuild. But anyhow, God's still in control, God still rules, and God still reigns, and we've still got a long way to go, and things are still going to have a lot of recovery going on. But George Bush Senior, one time, if you remember, preached a lot on the New World Order. New World Order was simply an organization that says everything's going to become socialist, and you can buy a pound of baloney in Germany for a dollar, a pound of baloney in France for a dollar, a pound of baloney in England, United States, and the world for a dollar. But if you want plenty of free baloney for nothing, just go to Washington, D.C., and you can get all you want for free. It's a sad world that we're living in and what's going on there. Sad that we're sitting in a situation where the Democrats, Republicans are just gnawing each other down, and things are happening, and it's really sad that we need to get out of here. I don't mean this hard, the Democrats becoming an evil party. They're doing anything they can to stop anything that's going that is good. The Democrats are condoning abortions, which is murder. And the Ten Commandments says, "Thou shalt not murder." Then they turned right around, and now they're saying same-sex marriage, and everything that's against the Bible, they are against everything that's in the Bible. They're what today calling evil good and all of these things. Like I said, we need to get out of vote. When we see, I saw Roy Cooper, and I watched him go through town. He might be doing some good things, but Roy Cooper is an advocate of the homosexual rights, homosexual agenda. From what I'm getting, as long as we keep on doing what we're doing, as long as we keep on putting God to the left, kicking him out of the scrolls, turning down the Ten Commandments, turning down all the crosses, we're all going to continue to get what we're getting now. We're just going to get even worse. And when we see the New World Order and these things sitting in, you're going to see a socialist government, you're going to see all these things take place, and things are going to get worse than what they are today. I used to say I would never think I could see things get any worse, but when I see all destruction coming on everywhere, I see all the floods, I see the families, I see the fires everywhere. Every nation now is full of floods and fires. I see God is trying to speak to America, and many of us are not listening to what he is trying to tell us. And the people of the Democratic Party, like Nancy Pelosi done the thing on Murphy Brown the other night. She walks out, introduces herself, gets ready to leave, turn around, and gives her a card. And on that card, when Murphy Brown turned around, she read it, she said something to the fact, see what we could be getting, to see what America could be getting and what we have lost by us not voting for Hillary Clinton. Sad world we're living in today, but we need to get back to a world that we can help each other. Like Sunday, we passed out over two thousand plates. We win, it just got some money, it got some people together, and we got two thousand plates to give out to the victims here in New Bern. Heard a lot of crying and a lot of tears, a lot of thankful people that there was somebody there to help them. But I'm telling you today, the Democratic Party is not helping people today. They are hurting their own selves, and I see all the fighting in Washington, D.C., and I'm praying to God that people see what is going on, and they will vote for truth and honesty and the word of God, and they'll get back to God. I'm hoping maybe the storm has brought people to listen. I've always said sometimes before we can listen, God's got to get us down, and I really think that's going on. But when I see people like Obama still on the front line, and he's still preaching, and all he done was advocate everything that was for the Bible, he advocated against it, homosexualism, whatever. Anyhow, God bless and vote the right way.
Thank you, Reverend.
Mr. Chairman, no additional people. Let's show them to sign up, please.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of September Fourth, regular session, and September twenty-first, reconvene session. The Board will request to approve the minutes of September Fourth and the twenty-first, National Recovery Month proclamation, tax releases and refunds, fire department budget amendment, National Friend of Libraries proclamation, and reschedule of public hearing. I motion to...
Suck it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? None? All call about, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes.
I'm here.
Oh, Commissioner Tyson, sorry.
Commissioner Tyson, sir. Okay. At this point, I'm going to take chairman's privilege to make a couple of announcements. One of them, I'd like to have Chairman David Hale of the Board of Education step up to the podium. And it is my pleasure to have this opportunity to recognize a group of educators in our school system today who may be a bit surprised about this announcement, and I'm going to let you make the announcement.
I shall. And thank you, Chairman Moore, Vice Chairman Dacey, and the Commissioners. You know how I love to come up here and brag about our schools? Tonight's no different. It's my pleasure, as you have said, to take the opportunity to recognize a group of educators in our school system. Many, as you said, may not even know why they're here tonight. But if I may, with your privilege, I'd like to bring forward the staff members of W.J. Gorganus Elementary School. You would come forward, please? May we? Stepping up front is our principal, Ms. Deborah Hurst. As they gather. In the spring of this year, Ms. Deborah Hurst, Principal of W.J. Gorganus, was notified that her school had been selected as a finalist for the United States Department of Education National Blue Ribbon School Award. The National Blue Ribbon School program recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence or their progress in closing the achievement gap among student subgroups. Every year, the U.S. Department of Education seeks out and celebrates, as we do, great American schools, schools demonstrating that all students can achieve to high levels. More than eight thousand five hundred schools across the country have been presented with this coveted award. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Award affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging content. The National Blue Ribbon School flag gracing an entry or flying overhead is a widely recognized symbol of exemplary teaching and learning. Mrs. Hurst and her co-conspirator have tried to keep this quiet until the official notification of the award was provided, and many of us did not know as well. We received that notification late this past Friday. At our next Board of Education meeting, we will offer a resolution celebrating and congratulating this high-performing school, staff, and their leadership. Again, they bring the spotlight to Craven County but also to the state of North Carolina and our nation. I'd like to now invite Ms. Hurst.
Come up and say a few words, please. Good evening. First of all, I'm sorry. They're here to answer questions tonight about the hurricane. That's what they were told they were given. Operation Lightyear staff is in place right now.
But they couldn't do that.
They could, but after this, I don't think they're going to let us. But it is a great honor and a great privilege to receive this award. Gorganus Elementary is very fortunate to have a wonderful staff, and I have a few of my members here with me tonight that I want to introduce you to. This is Ms. Darby Dillon, a third-grade teacher. Ms. Joyce Savido, a fifth-grade teacher. Ms. Amy Bum, a fourth-grade teacher. Ms. Lauren Sabera, a fifth-grade teacher. I'll be right back, young lady. Ms. Summer Bjork, a second-grade teacher. And Ms. Amy Haslam, our Title I Interventionalist. These ladies and everybody in Gorganus work hard because we know that every student will succeed, and we appreciate all the support we get from our Board of Education, from our commissioners, and from our parents, our community. One of the biggest things that I wrote in this was the connection we have with our community and the military community. It's huge in Havelock, and we're so proud of that, and we're so thankful for all those resources that they give us. So I humbly accept this award as they do, and we're just so happy and so proud of our staff and our kids, and we're so thankful that we can come and share that with y'all tonight. So, rock on, Gators. Thank you.
And thank you for letting me share this wonderful news and take a few moments away from your meeting right now. I'd like to turn it back over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, in turn, would like to say, and I am pleased to say, to enable you to share in this good news of W.J. Gorganus Elementary and Craven County Schools. This award amplifies the high standards of the school for their educators and their learners. As a symbol of our congratulations for W.J. Gorganus Elementary School, we would like to offer a resolution commending W.J. Gorganus for being selected the United States 2018 National Blue Ribbon School. And I'll read that resolution. Craven County Board of Commissioners commencing W.J. Gorganus Elementary School for being recognized as a National Blue Ribbon School. Whereas W.J. Gorganus Elementary School in Havelock is recognized as the 2018 National Blue Ribbon School by the United States Department of Education, and whereas the National Blue Ribbon School program honors public and private schools across the nation that have demonstrated academic excellence and made major improvements to student achievement, W.J. Gorganus Elementary School is second school in Craven County to receive this designation. Whereas the Blue Ribbon Schools Award affirm the hard work by students, educators, and families and community to foster environments like W.J. Gorganus Elementary School where learners can reach their full academic potential and successful civic life. Whereas, opened in 1992, W.J. Gorganus Elementary School is part of the Craven County school system and includes approximately four hundred students in kindergarten through fifth grade. Whereas W.J. Gorganus School is talented educators, rely on best practices in the classroom to address each student's individual needs and learning styles. In addition, Gorganus has a significant population of students who are connected to the military, and the school emphasizes the patriotic values of the best of our nation in our classrooms with our families and for our community. Whereas dedicated to leadership and student empowerment, W.J. Gorganus Elementary School students lead in their schools serving as ambassadors, conducting peer tutoring to their young classmates, and serving as a great role model for their peers. Whereas W.J. Gorganus Elementary School engages the community in the school with the Marine of Cherry Point Marine Corps Air Station as part of the Adopt a Squadron program, and family volunteers to take an active role in tutoring, partnering with educators, and supporting every aspect of the work of the school. Whereas W.J. Gorganus Elementary School has an unwavering commitment to the success of every student, employing a continuous improvement model to systematically assess the strengths and provide support for the growth and development of every student. And whereas J. Gorganus Elementary School's selection as a Blue Ribbon School is a tribute to the outstanding work of its students and exemplary leadership and dedication of its administrators, teachers, and staff, now therefore be it resolved by the Craven Board of County Commissioners hereby recommend that the school, on its selection as the 2018 National Blue Ribbon School by the United States Department, and be resolved further that the clerk of the Board of Commissioners prepare a copy of the resolution for presentation to Deborah Hurst, Principal of W.J. Gorganus Elementary School, as an expression of the Board of the County Commissioners' admiration for the school's commitment to giving its students strong foundation for lifelong learning. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
I have a motion to adopt...
So move.
Suck it. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. I also would like to take a little extra time to recognize an individual who I met a few days ago when I was sleeping in a cot in the courtroom. Her name was Maria Figueroa, and she spent some time with us, explaining to me and the county manager exactly what they can do for us, and I'd like her to come up and spend some time and introduce each one of the people in her unit.
Thank you. I am Maria Figueroa. I am with the Intergovernmental Affairs Department of FEMA. What I do is I go and visit elected officials during times of disaster.
Excuse me, Maria. Could you go to the mic because this is on TV?
My name is Maria Figueroa. I am with the Intergovernmental Affairs Department of FEMA. What we do is we visit elected officials, and we offer them information about all the programs available for the survivors so that they can inform their constituents. Now, I brought with me subject matter experts on each of the programs. If you want to have them answer questions, they are all here. Could you please stand up and introduce yourselves?
Could you have them come up?
Good evening. My name is Abby Icorn. I'm with FEMA, and I'm with the Public Assistance Program. So I'm here, I can answer questions in support of the state for critical infrastructure, recovery, the grant program that we can put into place to hopefully help you recover some of your infrastructure, your public buildings and things like that tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Is she going to take some questions?
Hello. My name is Radora Stillwagon, and I'm with the Disaster Assistance, and we deal with the individuals and businesses that have been affected, and I can answer questions about registration and how to get you into the system to get the process working.
Good evening. My name's Jerry Haney. I'm the FEMA Division Supervisor for this area, the sixth county's North Carolina Emergency Maintenance Area Three, which includes Craven County.
Hello, I'm Brian Boca, and with FEMA, obviously, and with the Individual Assistance Program. I can answer any individual assistance question you may have, the full gamut of our programs that we have to offer. Thank you.
I'm Carrie McNamara. I'm with the United States Small Business Administration Disaster Assistance. Here to explain that we're not just for businesses, we help homeowners and renters as well, so I'd like to take some questions and discuss that.
Mr. County Manager, should we do this now? Or you want...
My name is Carl Ray, and I'm with mitigation with FEMA, and I'm here to answer any questions in regards to mitigation for you. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. I'm Angela Burd with FEMA. I am a Public Information Officer, spokesperson for the agency. Thank you.
So whatever questions you have, you may send that to me, or you can ask them now directly. Later, I will be sending you their contact information so that you can contact them and have them answer any questions.
Okay. Do any of the Commissions have questions?
I have some questions and mainly comments at this point in time because people often associate the federal flood insurance program with FEMA, and they're two different agencies. If you have flood damage, for the most part, to your structure, you call your insurance agent who will contact the federal flood insurance program, and they'll send an assessor out there to look at your property, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you're separate agencies. What kind of interaction do you have with the federal insurance program, flood insurance program?
We have someone here...
They're really not separate. They're one and the same. It's just different branches. Just like if you go to IBM, they have an operations branch, and they have a plant management branch, same type of thing. FEMA...
Do they come under the FEMA umbrella?
They do.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that.
So when you call them, you are getting different people, but there are people that work with FEMA, for FEMA, employed by FEMA. There are also agents out in the field working with the insurance agents, the adjusters. Sometimes they're FEMA employees, sometimes they work for the write-your-own companies, but they're brought in under the FEMA umbrella, given the guidelines for how the claim should be adjusted, and then they go out and do the work.
Okay. Ms. Karen, I have a lot of questions I would like to ask. I mean, if somebody wants to go down the table, I do have some more.
Let Steve do it if he takes your homeworks and so much.
Okay. So you're with the mitigation part of FEMA, is that correct? And I think I understood you addressing the county government, but you also work with individual homeowners as well, is that...
Individual...
Homeowners with structures, or are you just with government mitigation?
Mitigation will work with individual homeowners, will work with renters, will work 406. There are four parts of FEMA, okay? The first part is educating people on what mitigation is and how they can help them. The second part is simply the National Flood Insurance Program. Within the National Flood Insurance Program is the FEMA Insurance Agency. National Flood Insurance Program works with your cities, your counties, and the state on developing flood plain management rules and guidance, and also works with insurance, making sure insurance is available to any county or city that is a participating county or city. So if your county belongs to the National Flood Insurance Program, then that's a participating community. If it does not belong to the National Insurance Flood Program, then it is not a participating community.
Okay. There's been some talk about some communities, maybe it's the entire county, I don't know, but if you have damage to your property and you're filing on a federal flood insurance claim, that if it's over fifty percent of the value of the structure, that you will have to either raise the property up to the existing flood plain level if you're not there now, or you'll have to pay, you know, quite a bit more on your insurance policy when you renew it.
Substantiative adjustments teams are out in the field right now assessing properties that qualify for severe... that qualify for severe damage and substantial damage. If you qualify for that, then you're given the opportunity to do, to mitigate your home, which elevation is part of it, maybe a buyout program, that's handled by HMGP, another part of mitigation. And so then you are given the opportunity, yes, you may raise it or not. If you don't, if you don't raise it, the base flood elevation at some point in time will be raised for you. And when the base flood elevation is raised, it's approved by the county, it's approved by the city. Once that happens, then everyone's rate goes up that is below that level, and it goes up from it. The most important thing any of the citizens of any county and any state can do is get something called the, my throat's squinting on me.
You want some water?
Oh, thank you.
We have plenty of water here. We have nothing else. We have plenty of water.
It's called... It's called, you're looking for, get into my notes here for a second. I'm getting older, so I forget things that I used to remember all the time. Phrase your question again, please.
I can't even remember what I asked. Can you play the tape back? Does anybody remember exactly?
Elevation certificate. The most important thing that anyone can get is an elevation certificate.
Right.
That will be issued by a civil engineer or a surveyor. It's good to within one-eighth of an inch. If it's two-eighths of an inch, he loses his right to practice in this state. So it will be right to one-eighth of an inch. If you have an elevation certificate, you know exactly how much you would have to pay in insurance. Without it, then your agent is taking a wild guess, and most insurance company will rate you, I'm sure you've all had a 16-year-old son, and when the insurance hit and it went from $200 a month to a grand, you went through the roof wondering what was happening. That's what happens when you don't have an elevation certificate. You're spending more money. If you have an elevation certificate, you will get charged the exact amount you need. Once you get an elevation certificate, you can take that to your insurance agent, you can take that to your mortgage company, and the insurance agent will make sure that your rate is lowered immediately, and they also backdate it.
In North Carolina, this may be something for, is Don Bungartner in the house? Don?
Yes.
Okay. I believe, I believe that I have read or seen somewhere that the new federal insurance maps for flood have been approved by the state. Is that correct? No, approved by the federal government's, the one that they redrawn?
Possibly approved by the federal government, but the state has given local communities no notification yet.
Okay. My concern is that people get the money to start rebuilding or just before they're ready to rebuild, and then the map changes. And then they didn't have to elevate their house, and now they may be required to. Is that a scenario that could be possible?
It certainly is a possibility, but I think that anyone that had the damage would want to try to achieve the proper elevation to prevent it from occurring again in the future. Some of the programs that FEMA has, one of the problems oftentimes that we have, there's a lag in that process between when the event happens and when the folks are trying to get back in their homes. So that causes us some problems.
Okay.
Can I interject one time?
Absolutely.
Because the rumor's been going around, and I think we need to make sure that all of our citizens know this, the flood maps have not changed since 2004, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
So the rumor that folks are hearing that this board of commissioners have changed it in the last, since Hurricane Matthew is false, and that rumor is going around. So continue on.
But I would like to make sure that everybody understands why you're on that, because someone said that when the city or county approves the new maps, we're going to have to prove them if we want to continue with the federal insurance program.
Correct.
So we, I mean, it's not a, you know, that's their carrot, so, and certainly we need to do that, but I could go on for a long time, but in, in keeping things fair with the rest of the board, I'm just going to come and see some of you guys maybe tomorrow. But I would like to get Karen, Karen Kay from the Small Business Administration to come up, because I think that this is absolutely critical, that people understand what the Small Business Administration does, and it's not for business only by a long shot.
Yeah. Yes, thank you for that. We spoke earlier, and the, I think some of the surprising things that I hear is that renters can get up to $40,000 in property coverage. So SBA offers is low-interest loans.
This would be a loan, not a grant, but they're low interest.
Yeah, we're the second part of the FEMA process. So you, folks first apply with FEMA, we want everybody to do that, no matter who you are, business or not. And then most of the people who apply through FEMA, FEMA makes a calculation, and some of them will be referred to SBA. They're going to be contacted by SBA via whatever method they gave FEMA, via email or a phone number. And I am hearing from folks that some people will see that on their phone, it says Small Business Administration, and, oh, I'm not a business, and they just forget about that. They're being contacted by SBA as a result of their FEMA registration, and that they should pay attention to that because we're the second, we're the second part in the disaster assessment process. We want to see what everybody's eligible for, and so we want to make sure that they complete the loan application, even if they're not sure they want the loan, or even know where they are at the present moment. It's part of the government's federal assistance. So a couple of reasons why we want them to go through the process is, one, if we offer someone a loan to repair their property, you can put it on hold so they won't necessarily have to use it right away. We'd like them to just have it in their back pocket should they need it down the road. It's my hope that no one needs it, but it's my experience doing this work that a couple of months down the road, they actually realize that they're going to need some money, and our product always beats the market. We're not a bank, so we don't have to have any fees, and we have, costs are much lower. So that's an important thing for people to understand about that. The other reason is that there's one final grant available through FEMA to those that are referred to SBA, they go through the process with SBA, and we cannot help them. If that happens at the time where we have to decline someone, their name is referred back to FEMA for one more final grant consideration, and we don't want anybody to lose out on that money should that be their situation. Anything else, sir, that you think I might need to...
A lot of things.
There's so many things to address.
I want people to be aware of what you do. So when you register for FEMA, that's why it's critical that you register with FEMA online, on their 800 telephone number, or at their new recovery center, which is...
Right. The old Eckles, Eckards?
Eckards.
The old Eckards, right across from...
Beside McDonald's.
Yeah, right across the street.
On the street, across the street from where? The pig.
The pig. You know, I went to, the first time I went to one of those just last week, and I was so excited. And I looked like a crazy person, so happy.
So you need to, if you're a tenant, and there's thousands and thousands of tenants, I don't know how many were affected, but an awful lot.
So renters, right?
You need to register with FEMA. It's very important, and if you register with FEMA, your office with the SBA is going to call them, and there's, there's a lot of tools that you have to help people recover that are tenants. And there's so much that I learned, and Commissioner Bassey, I know that you, I think, work with the SBA, SBI, SBA, whatever.
Oh, SBI, SBI sounds kind of scary, yeah. But I would, if I could, so renters can get up to $40,000 for their personal property. Our rates are 2%, so it's very good. They start at 2%, most people will receive that. But homeowners, in addition to that $40,000 for personal property, they can get an additional $200,000 for the real estate property damage. In addition to that, we have mitigation programs, and we have refinancing programs, we have relocation programs. All of these additional programs are available to those that go through the process and first approved for disaster damage. And for some of these programs, you need to have significant damage, which we know some folks do.
Two more points, and then I'm, I'll be quiet, I promise.
That's all right. You were asking...
You, someone has an $8,000 deductible on the insurance, and believe me, you, a lot of people have that or more. Can you get a small business loan to pay that?
Yes, we can help with deductibles.
Okay.
We can help with other, the beauty of the system is FEMA helps with this portion of it. We help with other things that aren't covered other than insurance, you know, both of them do not duplicate. So whatever insurance pays for, we don't. But one of the beautiful parts about SBA is we want you to come to us first. I know with FEMA's requirement, needing you to deal with your insurance and handle that, if you have insurance, SBA wants you to come to us first. Just come to us, even if you've got insurance, let's get the process started and give you the funds you need so the recovery can get started now, and that provides you time to negotiate with insurance and come to a settlement, and then we'll just work that out later. You'll just pay us back with that. We're very good at doing that. And we're also very good at modifying any of the loan, any of the loan items. You want to, she, look, talk about the interest rate, how much money we gave you, the length of time we gave you to pay it back, are all items that are appealable, and we'd like you to, to know that we're trying to make it, we're going to stretch it out as long as possible should you need us to, because we don't want to make this a burden. We're here to help the recovery.
One thing I haven't been asked, but I'm going to ask anyhow, is say you're flooded, your house flooded, your flood insurance does not cover additional living expenses, I do not believe. Is that correct, anybody?
It does not.
It does not include, so if you have to go rent a house or stay in a hotel while your house is being repaired, that's not covered by your flood insurance, and it's not covered by your homeowner's insurance, so you're on your own. Are there...
Could be covered by wind and hail.
Not if it's flood.
And also...
Not if it's flood.
If you have flood insurance, you are eligible for rental assistance through FEMA. That's why we want you to register, because flood insurance, people up to 18 months, they could get rental assistance.
Okay. Is that a grant type, or is that a loan? That is a grant.
Steve, perhaps we, because that's exactly the series of questions that I wanted to get into as well.
Okay. I'll turn it over. I'll yield my time to Commissioner Bassey.
Hi there. Please come up. And ma'am, if you, from the SBA, if you could stick around just one second, please. So what we have here is the Housing Assistance Program that FEMA has, and you will, for me, you will hear questions that are based in, unfortunately, my own personal experiences that I'm having to go through, but I think that they are probably representative of what many folks in the community are facing today. So I apologize that it may seem as though it's all about me.
No, that's okay.
And the people that know me understand that that's the case anyway, so it doesn't really matter. But, so we've got, we've got a Housing Assistance Program. When you make out your application to FEMA, you let them know that your home is no longer habitable, and then they will send you a little note saying whether or not you have, whether or not you're eligible for housing assistance. In my instance, they sent me a note saying that I'm not eligible for housing assistance. I don't know why. I went through and asked the question, okay, well, what are the requirements? You have to have a loss in a presidentially declared disaster area, we meet that. You have to have no insurance or have filed an insurance claim, but the damage for all your losses isn't covered. I have insurance, but again, as the gentleman said, if you're, you're hit by flood, FEMA's not going to cover you, your homeowner's doesn't cover you for flood. So therefore, I meet that. Someone who lives with you is a U.S. citizen, I am indeed a U.S. citizen, affected home is your primary residence, it is, and you can't access your home or your home requires repairs because of disaster damage. Unfortunately, I and many people do fall into that situation. So what's the situation? Why did I get a letter of declination?
Okay. Was your home, is your home accessible? Did you, when you registered, did you say that your home was accessible or inaccessible?
Inaccessible.
Okay. So that's the problem right there. If your home is inaccessible, an inspector can't come to the home because it's not safe, or they can't, that, and when, once the home becomes, they can come to the home and inspect it, they'll reopen that, and they, and that, but right now, until you have an inspection of your home, everything is going to be denied, and that's what the problem is.
This is very helpful, because when you answer that question, you're answering it from the perspective of, can I use my home or can't I use my home? It doesn't mean that it's inaccessible from an inspector's perspective to be able to come in and view the unit. That's certainly allowable.
Okay. So then you, then we can, what you need to do is you can either call the 800 number, visit the DRC, and speak to someone and tell them, ask them how they have it listed. If you said your home was inaccessible, and then that's how it's listed, until you go in and have that changed in your file, they are not going to send an inspector. So you have to go and have your, an update to your case file.
Okay. We've got, in my district, hundreds of people that will meet this qualification, so we will go ahead and get that word out.
Yes, yes.
With respect, thank you so much.
Sure.
You're very helpful. So we should go ahead and file, if you're an instance like me, file the appeal?
Yes. And what it is, it's not going to be actually an appeal. You're going to call and tell them that your home is accessible.
Okay.
And they, they will do the paperwork, and they will schedule an inspector to come see the home, and once the inspector comes, then the process should get started.
Okay.
And I know IA's here, and maybe I'm not answering it quite as well as I should. You may be better expert at it.
I can fill it out a little bit.
Yes.
You're doing a good job. There's a variety of reasons why you may get a declination letter, just so you know. That is one of them, absolutely. If you've also provided any other insurance documentation, just to say, for example, homeowner's insurance, or, you know, you stated in your application that you have homeowner's insurance, that will also put your application on hold. And what will happen is, they're waiting for that documentation to come back and say, your insurance company is not going to cover you for any assistance. So because of the nature of the damage that you had to your home, you may have not only, like was stated earlier, flood insurance, but you may also be eligible for certain types of wind and hail, which those do pay additional living expenses. So in those kind of instances, FEMA's waiting for you to respond back to them and say, here's my letter from my insurance company that says, I didn't have wind and hail, or I didn't have that kind of damage, and they're not going to cover me for additional living expenses.
Sir, it would be then helpful if, in the letter of declination that comes into the individual, if it said, please consider the following issues. Number one, is your house accessible or not? Did you, did you trigger that? We need to make certain that it's accessible. Number two, do you have other insurance that might cover wind or hail? And if you were a victim of that, that might be an alternative opportunity for you. You know, it'd be nice if there was something that would suggest to the person that's receiving this decline letter what it is that they should be thinking about.
I agree completely with you, and typically what I recommend people to do, because their first response when they get, receive a declination letter as such, they just see you were not eligible for assistance.
Right.
And they stop at that point, on the very first page, probably maybe three quarters of the way down. And they give a brief description of some information that doesn't really make a lot of sense at times to the homeowner themselves or the renter, that says FEMA's description is why they were declined. If you read further into the document, it tends to be anywhere from about three to seven pages long, depending upon the type of packet that you've received, but they can be several pages long. It's more than one. So you definitely have probably, I know, I think the letters now are about three pages. If you read through that, it tells you the step-by-step process of how to appeal, the length of time that you have to appeal, and in some instances, they do have additional information there for you to reference. So I recommend every homeowner or renter, anybody who's applied for FEMA assistance, who feels as though they did not receive the assistance that they were due, to please go back, refer to their letter, and follow the appeal process that's listed in there. And, or they can simply call up the 1-800 number for FEMA, and they can update their files. So like, if your home is accessible now, you can let them know, my home is now accessible, and I would like to have an inspection. At that time, they may talk with you and find out that you have that additional insurance paperwork pending. No problem, I'll send you the insurance paperwork, and they'll have a fax number for you to submit it to. So those are all things that'll get your file moving again.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I wanted to add one thing to SBA, when she said, not everybody is referred to SBA. So if you're referred to SBA, you need to fill out that application, but not everybody is referred to SBA, because at some point they feel that maybe they, they can't pay a loan back, or whatever, anyway, not everybody will get that SBA. So those that do, though, do have to fill it out.
Okay. If the lady from the SBA could come forward. Ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
And you are on the hot seat, because of course...
Good. That's okay.
The administrator of the agency is from Craven County.
No kidding.
So you've got to be concerned about this. You've got to come through big time.
I've seen, she's in everybody's wedding, and everybody's best friend, and I think I just texted her right now. It's kind of scary.
So the loans that you have available, 2% for homeowners, up to $200,000.
They begin at 2%. Most people will qualify for that.
Right. But I did notice that if you have assets of your own, that... that the best rate that you're gonna get is four percent. Can you describe to the viewers here, what might be the differences between somebody that's eligible for a two percent loan and somebody who's eligible for a four percent loan?
Why you really working me today? Actually, uh, that's a very great, that's a good question. If we like to think of, I like to think of the disaster programs as they're to help those that need help, that can't help themselves the most. So while the program is eligible for everyone, the lowest rate that the, that the, that we can provide is offered to those who don't have credit available elsewhere readily, easily. And so that's the way we like to, that's the way I like to explain it. Uh, and that's, that's the reason for the, the two, the difference there.
So if you've got a, um, uh, equity line for your home, that could prohibit you from being able to access the two percent?
Maybe.
Okay.
Um, I, you know-
I'm just trying to think of, of examples.
Yeah, I can't just, the, here's the formula, it's cut and dry, 'cause it isn't cut and dry for everybody. It has, there's variables and they're different. Your neighbor is absolute-
Just go ahead, fill out the paperwork.
Yes.
Do your best that you can and then let, let the process work itself through. And they will let you know what it is that you're able to qualify for.
Absolutely.
And presumably, there's an opportunity to appeal if you feel as though that you should be getting the benefit of something else.
Yes.
So it's imperative that people do fill out the paperwork and ask for what they can.
So you're gonna, you don't ask for a certain amount, which a lot of people think, well, how, how much am I asking for? You're just going to apply. An inspector's gonna come out, much like a FEMA inspector will come out. And you're gonna have that discussion with them about everything you can think of you. That's, that's when you wanna tell them any concerns you have, something I'm not sure if that's damaged, tell them everything. They'll make an assessment, they'll come up with a, some formula, and then a loan officer will make a decision at that point. That's when you're provided with a determination. And as I said, all of the terms are, can be appealed. So, yes, sir. And, and I would say, if you, if you are that person with a home equity line of credit and you got the higher rate, please take the advantage to, the opportunity to appeal. Try it.
Yeah.
Write a handwritten note. And there are things that we cannot describe on a piece of paper or in a form, that are just facts of life. I have my parents. Or there are other things, other mitigating factors that maybe you can tell us in that narrative that you're in.
And again, with this loan, um, the gentleman spoke about mitigation activities. If you have to raise your house,
Yes.
this money could be critical for helping you raise the house, because this is not an inexpensive proposition.
Right, that's correct.
And while FEMA could come forward with thirty thousand dollars, that's really, actually, just a small fraction of what it's likely to cost many homeowners to raise their home.
That's true. I do want to be careful, though, because the, uh, the additional money that is offered by SBA for mitigation is twenty, is up to twenty percent of the disaster damage. So that calculation is very important that's made by the, by the inspector. So we can give you a portion of it. I understand there's this other portion of it, it, in combination with some insurance, that's, that's the bigger picture.
So when you're saying twenty percent, if one were to ask for two hundred thousand dollars, they would have to have a million dollars worth of loss?
Yes. That, now this is in addition to your already disaster damaged loan.
Okay, thank you.
I can have the IA back up. So let me, let me ask you this. We've had, we've had a mobile team down in Havelock for the last week. We're going to get a site this week, correct? Down in Havelock, that would be set up. We've received a large number of denials. So once that office gets set up, can they go in there and find out why, based on Commissioner Dacey's, I mean, wording particular? I mean, it seems about everybody that's went in to the mobile site has already gotten their letters back denied. And some of these people have, have lost everything. I mean, uh, you know, so it's gotta be about wording then. So instead of calling, can there be somebody there, once we get the site set up, that they come in and sit down and somebody walk them through this?
Absolutely, yes. And in fact, the recovery center that you're, uh, I'm assuming that's the site that they're referring to. Uh, the recovery center, that's its purpose, is for individuals to go there. Um, they are there to, they can serve a number of different purposes. So the recovery center itself, there are several individual assistance staff that will be on hand to review an individual's case file. So when they come through, they'll initially sign in, similar to the mobile site, actually. And what'll happen is, they will then, uh, go over to, uh, an individual assistance, um, staff member, who will pull up their case file, review their case, and if they have documentation already in hand that they wanna submit, they can take it then and upload it into the system for them. Uh, they can answer any questions that they may have, uh, you know, why did I get a denial letter? And they can help review their case file and help them understand better what the reasoning behind their denial may be. Um, there are also gonna be mitigation staff that will be present and, um, Small Business Administration staff that will be on site. There could, there could, I don't know what, all's been coordinated, because I'm not part of that piece of it. But there may be additional services there from volunteer organizations or other agencies that have come, um, that wish to have a seat there, uh, such as governmental, for example. The county has, uh, somebody there for their disaster substance, uh, supplemental nutrition assistance program, uh, or otherwise known as DSNAP. The Department of Labor may have a, uh, an office there. It all depends on the services that have been, uh, coordinated to be present in that recovery center. Uh, and then, of course, the space that, uh, will accommodate them. Um, additionally, just to expand a little bit, is I, I wanna, I wanna everyone understand, 'cause the focus is a lot on the housing assistance. So it was just basically the housing repair and rental assistance that a lot of individuals are referring to. But FEMA provides funding and others, other forms of assistance out there beyond just those. So the other needs assistance that you'll hear individuals talking about, and it's important to understand, is that through that SBA process, should an individual stop and say, I'm not filling out any of this paperwork having to do with the Small Business Administration, I'm not comfortable with it, I don't wanna do it. At that point, their process, in essence, stops. So unless they are otherwise, uh, of a low enough income to be moved forward through the process without the Small Business Administration application being submitted, I strongly recommend that everyone, please, take the time to fill that out. They don't have to accept a loan. But at least it moves them forward in that application process and in their recovery process. So things that open up at that point are their personal property items. So things they may have lost for their work related, uh, could be things that are associated with their car. Um, try to think, their, their couches, their clothing, things of that nature, are what we call SBA dependent. Now, there are things that are non-SBA dependent, right, that fall under other needs assistance. Those are things such as medical. So if you had a medical injury as a result of the disaster, uh, say you lost your, uh, your eyeglasses or your dentures or your hearing aid or things of, um, or if you had a death in the family, there's a funeral. Those things are not restricted by, uh, uh, eligibility or, uh, application assistance through the Small Business Administration. Those are done separately. So those are all forms of assistance that can be provided out in a monetary sense. There's also crisis counseling, I think that's being reviewed at this time. I, I'm not sure of the status of its, uh, bill that's been turned on. Uh, but they do provide, uh, mental health assistance out to individuals, uh, who have been through and, you know, been a survivor of the event itself. I know disaster case management's on the table and being discussed at this point. And, uh, there are many other, uh, types of, uh, assistance that's out there right now, both not only monetarily, but hopefully, uh, at the mental health side and case management side, to help individuals work through the process, which is often complicated. At least it comes off that way when you're trying to get back on your feet from a disaster. Uh, to help them, guide them through that process, uh, the most effective way possible.
Let's, Chairman, one more question before I go. No, I appreciate everything you said here, but somehow, we've gotta get the word back out. I mean, these people have received their letters within two days after seeing you.
Absolutely.
And they've already washed their hands. They said, well, I get nothing, can't get anything. And it's all because of wording. And I appreciate what you said, they can come in there, reopen their case, sit down with people. Because these people have nothing.
Correct.
All, I mean, they, they've lost it all. They don't have, mostly the case, don't have the insurance. They don't have anything to look forward to. And that's what surprised me of the large number that's been denied already. And based on Commissioner Dacey's, what he got for his, for wording, I'm sure it's that exactly what it is. But nobody's telling them. They see denial and they're walking and already upset. And FEMA can go shoot themselves as far as they're concerned, because what'd they do for me? Tell me I don't write nothing and I've lost everything.
No, and I understand that completely. And you're absolutely correct. Um, you know, it, it, people, um, everyone who receives a denial letter, if you do not feel that that is correct, um, you know, please, 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 uh, appeal. It's fine, that's what the process is there for. Take your documentation and everything you have with you, or even if you don't know what you need to provide, just go to the recovery center. And those staff in there are very well trained and they know how to walk individuals through that process and identify what the hold points are within their case. And let them know, okay, um, here it shows that we need a letter from your, uh, insurance company. Or, um, we need a letter from a contractor, or we need a letter from whatever it may be. Uh, please go get that and we're still here, just bring it back to us. And then they'll upload it into their case file from there.
But most people, you know, getting off the course here, most people, when they see a denial, that's it. That's it.
When they have insurance, that automatically generates a eligibility letter.
Yes.
So you supply that document from this, uh, from insurance.
But again, if nobody's, has explained it and walked them through it and they-
We tried for years to get them, we're working the field, we've tried for years to get them to change.
They don't, they don't know. And that's, but I appreciate everything you said.
And I completely understand where you're coming from. And, and they are correct, they have worked for years to try and do this stuff. But the bottom line is, is that this is happening now. And these individuals are receiving denial letters now. So regardless of what message they did or did not get before, the important thing is to, to relay the message that, please go to the recovery center, please call the one eight hundred number. And those folks can definitely help them, walk them through the process and help them understand where they've gotten hung up on. And I believe there's a couple other co- commentators behind me.
Can I correct something really quick? I wanna get back to that example that you, you said. So I want, I wanna make sure that this didn't come off incorrectly. So if you've had two hundred thousand dollar damage, we approve you for a two hundred thousand dollar damage, disaster damage loan. And you qualify for mitigation, you're gonna receive, the mitigation is twenty percent of that. So you've received twenty thousand dollars. Right, four, I'm sorry, forty thousand dollars. That clear it up? 'Cause it, he raised the issue that, um, it might not have come out that way.
Absolutely.
Okay. I wish they were better numbers, but-
I gotta fill, it's gonna be one of these things that I'm gonna have to be told no and then have to come ask again.
You know, one of the things that was said here is that we've told the people repeatedly, but there are people that are moving in here all the time that came from areas that didn't have this destruction or opportunity to have this destruction.
Sir, on the issue of getting the word out to the people, I know that we will work with Chief Kite and your, and Mr. White with the, uh, county PIOs and the FEMA PIOs. I know we'll be in touch with North Carolina's Emergency Management PIOs. And we'll put the word out every which way we can. And, and you're right, we need to get that word back out to appeal, appeal, appeal.
And, and it's good, and I really appreciate that. But I think it takes each one of us, because they're coming to us-
Every one of them.
And we hear it, and we've gotta make sure we understand it, saying, just because you've got a denial, doesn't mean you were denied. You've gotta go back in and, I think the biggest thing I've heard on it, once we open up our, our center, that they can go in one-on-one with a person. Not saying that the mobile team did anything wrong. They were great, they were on site, but trying to push people through. You, at the time they were there, just getting over it, they didn't know the questions asked. They didn't have anything to bring through it, so.
As odd as it may sound, the denial letter may be the second step in the process.
Okay.
Commissioner Sampson.
I, I'd like to say, I've been, I've been through a lot of the process. I, I had their, uh, inspector-
Excuse me, please be quiet.
I had this, uh, one, one inspector came, came by the house. He, he was the wind, wind inspector. Now, they got wind and they got water. Water don't cover wind, wind don't cover water, so I couldn't stand it. So you gotta, it looked like I gotta have two insurance. But when they went around, they looked, looked like they were looking, looking at the house for something that happened before, before they were putting it down, that, 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 that this storm didn't cause it. See, but with something happened before and that storm come, it can make it worse. And then the water inspector came through, flood, and, 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 and the water came up about, I said it came up about six, six foot. And, uh, and they come in there and they, they look at the, the floor, the floor look alright right now, but that water touched that floor, that floor got busted. And they, it looked like they only concealed it there. But they right started riding, but I told, I told the inspector concerning that. They go up on the roof, I had them go up on one, one of the lower roofs, uh, on my house. And they ran up there and looked, he said, it looked pretty good, but snapping pitch because I, I wanted to make sure it's alright when they finished, 'cause if it's not, I'm gonna make sure I snap pitch and send them to them. Because they, so I already, uh, I had my house recertified, ha- had the, the, uh, person come out there and redo the whole elevation certificate. And they went and looked at it and, and shot, had their, uh, that, uh, severe, come out there and he checked all the parts on it. Now, my insurance at that time was over a thousand dollars. And when, when they did that, my insurance came down about several hundred dollars. And so I, I don't follow all the rules and regulations. And now they, they said that anything on the outside of the house, they only, they only, they only count that. In your yard or your fence and everything, they don't even count that. So why, why don't they count some of the damages around the house? They don't, for water on, for wind, water over wind, they don't, they don't count.
So, um, if I may, I, I wanna clarify, uh, some of the, of, um, discussion that, that we're having here. So some of the inspectors, what you're referring to, when you say a wind inspector has come out versus somebody who's looking at the water, that's typically insurance. FEMA has one inspector that comes out. FEMA has one inspector, uh, that will come out for the housing assistance side, okay? So if there's a flood insurance inspector that's coming out, that's, that's different. And as far as what they are allowed to look at, I would, I would rather, I feel more comfortable letting mitigation speak to that. But before I do so, I'd like to cover just a couple things. The FEMA inspector is gonna reach out to the individual at the household. Or they'll identify themselves, they'll try to set up a time to come out and look at their house, okay? When they come out, they're looking at it for all, all types of damage that has occurred to the home. They're gonna assess it all at once. And they're gonna have a badge, like how would I wear it here, all right? There's may say FEMA contractor or something, but it'll say, it'll be a FEMA badge, it'll have their picture ID on it. And I recommend that the, that, you know, if anyone ever feels uncomfortable about somebody being at their house, to ask them, you know, just ask them, it's your right, to identify themselves. Now, don't take the badge. Yeah, but, you know, ask them to show their badge, identify themselves. And, um, that's their opportunity then to clarify, you know, okay, this is who this agent, this is who this person works for. And, uh, now in terms of what FEMA considers as eligible assistance, the, the inspector's identifying that when they go out there. But I will say that it's not only limited to the house. For the most part, it is, okay? But things like septic, so things that are tied into your utilities, so like your septic system and your well, those could be eligible depending upon whether or not they were damaged. So, uh, but as far as debris in the yard, uh, fence that's taken down or a shed that's out back, FEMA inspectors are not going to be concerned with that piece of it. Now, that's not to say that the insurance companies won't be, because they, you, your policy may cover outside buildings or, you know, other structures. But in terms of the FEMA assistance, they are looking at, you know, pretty much the footprint of the home outside of things that are considered your utilities. So, um, that's an important thing to understand as well. And I think it's also important to understand that any financial assistance that FEMA gives anyone is, is not to make them whole. There's other agencies out there that do that. There's the Small Business Administration, they can help make people whole through their loans. Uh, the insurance companies are there to help people become whole again. FEMA is there to help bridge a gap in your emergency, in your, in your recovery, okay? It takes you from, I have no shelter or nothing over my head, to, we can fix these things to make your home safe and habitable again, to return to. So that's where FEMA comes into play. If somebody who's lost their home entirely, they may need additional assistance. So they may have to go to a volunteer organization. Or they may have to go look at the Small Business Administration and see if there's assistance through there. So they may have to look at other alternatives if they have no home left to go to. But FEMA will still, should they be eligible, provide them the assistance that they can. Did that help answer your question, sir?
Well, one, one thing, see, I already filed, I filed with them insurance. I already filed with the insurance company. And then they were all, they, they said, they said FEMA would be by the house to look at it. And they, and I already saw, I had two, two inspector already come by. You know, another one come by and finish up.
That's more than likely the mitigation guys who came by? I'll let, uh, the gentleman here speak to that.
It is confusing.
It is confusing. Individual assistance has their inspectors who come to look at your home and look at your property within the home, okay? That's part of, that's part of one branch. So like you've got, like I said with General Motors, you're gonna have your plant, you're gonna have your production, you're gonna have your facilities departments. FEMA overall is a big company. FEMA has individual assistance, as the people have, have addressed earlier in the day, they're looking for specific issues, they have their inspectors. Mitigation has their inspectors. We have inspectors for 406 that work closely with, with PA, public assistance and we're, and work, and work with the cities and counties. Sometimes they're in the area and someone says, oh, they're the FEMA inspectors. So that gets the confusion going. Mitigation has several groups of inspectors. When we're doing studies for substantial damage estimates, that's one group of inspectors. You've got three people who pull up to a home, one person goes to the front left corner of the house and gets a GPS reading on it while the others are determining the amount of water that got into the house. They're documenting that damaged property. Then there's someone for flood insurance that come in. So there's all kinds of inspectors. It's important for you to ask when they come on your property, let me see your badge, let me see your jacket, who are you, for what purpose are you here, how can I help you? And then let them do the inspection, but take, take their name, take their badge or get all the information you can and then pick up the phone, call the DRC and say, we have these inspectors out here and I don't know what they're doing. They say they're with someone and, 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 you know, if that person can talk to them and find out exactly where they're from and what they're doing.
They were from FEMA, I never quite talked to them. And they were all. I was just a little upset because when they, when they kind of nitpick and say some certain thing don't happen, because I know within, by, by being here so long, I know that if you, if water get under your house and touch the bottom of that door or that flowing, that floor got buckled. And if they see the floor not buckle when they're there, they're not gonna take that into consideration. I know they're not.
The important thing to remember with FEMA as a whole, all the different branches, the important thing to remember is appeal, appeal, appeal. If you don't like the finding you got, continue to appeal until someone tells you clearly why you're not covered or they look at it and say, oh, okay, you've got a right to request different inspectors to come out and look and see if it's different. So appeal, appeal, appeal.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question along Mr. Sampson's point?
Yes.
In, in regular home insurance, if you have a claim and, and then there's, I would say damage attributable to that claim discovered later on, then that's generally covered by that, by the claim, by the same claim, so you don't have another deductible. Is that the case with Commissioner Sampson? If you had floor buckle six months from now and it, it could be determined that that was caused by the storm, would that be covered?
Yes.
Under the same.
When you have additional damage that you didn't report initially or that wasn't inspected, with contractors' estimates or documentation that state that that was caused from the flood, that's when you can go back and appeal that.
And, and that is.
But they want documentate, you know, they, they want to be provided contractors' estimates and documentation, but you can appeal that because a lot of people don't realize something that happened in the trauma or, you know, a month or two down the road. So it's all appealable.
So in the private sector insurance, the rule of thumb used to be, and I've been out of about three years, that you could go back and claim against a.
Yeah. I can't answer the private, but FEMA, you can appeal that.
What length do you know that? But is there a time limit?
Probably up to the next, next disaster that comes through. I mean, if you can tie it into this disaster, then you can appeal it, okay? As she's speaking from an IA perspective, but from a flood plain insurance perspective, that's true as well, okay?
Mr. Chairman? Happy to answer Commissioner Lyer.
I'm sorry, one more thing. Commissioner Sampson? There is some good news though. SBA will help you with the things that FEMA won't help you with. SBA will. They will help you with fences and other things that FEMA won't help you with. So come on down, we're waiting for you. Blue shirts.
All right. Will you tell us where you're located?
We are located at the Eckers Building, next to McDonald's.
Crossalls from.
Across from the pig.
All the best heritage, but I didn't, I didn't question no one.
Well, we need to question you, I think, is the thing.
Commissioner Lyer.
This young lady's got an answer for me or she's been trying to get up here?
I just, before going through the appeal process, visit our recovery center, check with IA, have a quote case file, see if there's something you need to provide us. And then if that, all that information was provided, they will also instruct you on how to go through that, what you need to go through the appeal process.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the most important thing is FEMA's not gonna be here forever and we're gonna be here as long as we're needed, but the best line of defense always, and if people like one-on-one, is 1-800-621-3362. That is the bottom line. You're gonna get your best answers from there.
Put that number again, please.
If you don't understand, just say help.
That is, that is, if nothing else, and, and some people aren't gonna be able to get into that recovery center. And I know the lines are busy now, people registering, calling for case inquiries and that, but that truly is the best information you're gonna get is from those people working that. They do that every single day, so that's a good thing to have, and the DRC.
I've, I've always got to give my disability partners a, a ring out there and it's important to understand that recovery centers will be ADA accessible. There will also be ADA equipment there that should be available for people who have visual or hearing impairment issues. As far as the phone lines go, those that are non-English speaking need to call in and register, they are able to do that. They should be able to provide interpretive services for them as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing from my part on a little personal experience deal. So we show up to the house after having been gone. I, I took the advice of the chairman and I evacuated, came back and we were.
First time he ever took my advice.
We were, we were fortunate enough to have a connection through our insurance company, to have somebody come over that would take a look at remediating the house, to do, get all the stuff out of the house. But they ask us to sign these agreements and I'm hearing these numbers of $40,000, $50,000 and I've got no way to know what's appropriate here. What should I be signing? What shouldn't I be signing? Is there any, is there any rule of thumb here as to how big my house is and what, what it should cost in order to do these things? And you're at their mercy because you're just happy that somebody is there in front of you and is willing to, to take the, the stuff out of your house. And if there's some way that, and I, and I know that for this particular event, we'll pass the timeline, but if there were a way that we could get the word out ahead of time, if we know that we're, we've got a disaster coming on and we're gonna expect these legions of, of recovery folks to come in and, and Steve, I know you, Commissioner Tyson, you were in this business for a long time, you and I, I had the good fortune of being able to call you up and say, what's appropriate here? Give me a little bit of guidance, but without Commissioner Tyson, I would have been up a creek. Is there any resource that just maybe I wasn't familiar with that could give somebody that's in my position a better frame of reference that they don't get taken to the cleaners?
Is this before the storm, they were gonna take?
No, no.
This is after.
After, yeah, yeah.
So I, I've been doing this for 12 years, individual assistance. And I, I'll be honest with you, there's a number of contractors that will run into an area and typically what you're referring to would be a contractor that's offering some sort of service.
Like Sir Pro or whatever.
Sure, absolutely. You know, these are individual agreements that you're making with that, that company. So in many instances, what is up happening is in an area that's been, you know, deeply impacted such as this, restrictions are placed on what kind of contractors can come in and they've been pre-approved and, and if that has not been done, maybe that's something that you all would like to take into consideration in terms of permitting who comes in this area to assist individuals. Many small, many large, small towns, it doesn't matter, counties, there's an existing permitting process that's already in place for a contractor to come in and do work. During times of disaster, many, many times they'll expand upon that and say, well, you need to come in physically and so that we know that you're not here, you're not a fly-by-night, for example, and try and take advantage of our population. These are things that typically I would recommend to, to any government, county or, or city that is dealing with this in time of disaster, so that they can kind of manage the services that are being rendered to their population. There are many fly-by-nights that will come in. There are, I promise you, there will be contractors that will try to take advantage of people, absolutely. And, you know, the best thing to do at that point is for, if somebody feels as though they've been taken advantage, you know, there's the, there's the state attorney's office, there's, I'm sure, the countywide here, you guys have somebody that can be, that folks can call as well. We have disaster legal services that can provide some level of assistance as well and I, I recommend all those to those, those individuals. Anytime you're dealing with a private entity, I caution anybody working with them to, to do their homework. And you're right, it is overwhelming. But I do want you to understand that on the flip side of that, that there are many volunteer organizations that are out there as well who are ready, willing and capable to support and help. So I, I know there was a discussion early on about bringing, you know, edge of the Long Term Recovery Committee or setting up a, all right, I gave you, I gave you a bite there. So it, it's, I would, it's important, it is important, because that helps coordinate those voluntary agency resources to, to reach out and assist individuals who need the, the help.
Yeah, see, that was my problem. I, we knew that there were entities like that coming into our community, but I also knew that I was fortunate enough to have the, the homeowners, the FEMA insurance. And I didn't want to occupy those people, it just didn't seem right.
Right. No, and, and I think the important thing to understand is that many people who come in to offer their services will tell you, and they'll tell anybody, they'll say, oh, send your receipt into FEMA, FEMA will pay for it. That's not entirely accurate and I think if you have the flood insurance, that's something that you need to talk to a flood insurance agent before you move forward in those kind of decisions. I'm sorry, sir.
No, I, I was gonna make a suggestion that if you're, if you're gonna be, have a contractor put in the situation where, hey, you need to have something done or at least in your mind, you need to have it done right then and you have a contractor that comes out and gives you a proposal before you're a jester, I would, I would pencil in at the bottom and initial that you'll be reimbursed what we get reimbursed by the flood insurance. Most, most of the big companies, the disaster recovery companies are, they work off the industry standard for insurance. I mean, I, I would think FEMA is probably similar to what the private insurance justices use, you know, for the mitigation work.
To certain extent.
And reconstruction. There's probably not a big difference, I would venture to say, and, you know, that's.
Well, unfortunately, the two agreements that I looked at both said that if FEMA doesn't cover something, you will cover it personally.
Well, you know, you're caught between a rock and a hard spot and I.
And that, that's why I was wondering if there was some way to help educate the public to say, you know, here's a good rule of thumb or I love your suggestion about, and Mr. County Manager, if, if we haven't already done this, we should think about it for the future, pre-clearing these companies before they come in and seeing if there's a way that we can make certain that, because there's, there's no publication. I asked them for their rate sheet on what they're charging per hour to take the, the, the stuff out from underneath the house. They wouldn't give it to me. They said, we don't know, you know, we don't know what the reimbursement rate's gonna be for this storm, it depends on zip code and.
So, and, and to an extent, they're not entirely wrong, there is RS means that many are, and I'm not, not mean to use a, I don't know what RS means stands for, other than I know that it's the, the system in which they tabulate costs associated with repair, cleanup and, and debris removal. But I, I do want you to understand that, you know, if these kind of questions are coming up, that's why we have a PIO that's here. That's a perfect opportunity for, you know, you should be having these discussions with your state counterparts and saying, you know, we are, these are our concerns and we would like some messaging to go out in coordination with FEMA to ensure that this goes out in wide public distribution so that people understand kind of what they may have to deal with as they're out there. Either whether it be coordinating resources to come in to, to remove debris or their items from their home, before they receive their, their insurance or whatnot, all the way through repairs to their home. So, and that way, there's a coordinated message that goes out and you know everybody's getting the same message.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Number one, I would like to, to thank Maria. After spending a half hour and talking to her, I thought it'd be a good idea that she come in and bring the people that can help us answer these questions. And I think you've answered a lot of questions tonight and I think you all did a very good job in presenting each individual one. And I just want to thank you and I'm sure the commissioners want to thank you for your time.
We're here to help. And one thing that you have to remember, as I was talking to Mr. Tyson the other day, we need to manage people's expectations. That's, that's one of the things that we were clear about. FEMA will not make you whole, as they say, they will give you something to get back on your feet, but you need to follow the process. It's a long process, but it's the plus, the process that has worked until now.
Mr. Chairman, before, I'm assuming that you're getting ready to close that part of the meeting?
Yes.
Can I ask one more?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, because there's one that hadn't been addressed and a lot of people are displaced, as you know, and, and I've got a friend that called me today and said that he's got a two-bedroom, one-bath house and there's 12 people there. So they're camping out in his house and he's glad to help them, but the, you know, I've had questions about FEMA trailers and I've had questions about campers and so on and so forth. Where is the decision process if it has been touched on yet? And, and I think that's important. I mean, if you say they're not coming, that's fine, we need to know that. We're setting expectations. If you say it's gonna be, they are coming, but it's gonna be three months or four months because we haven't even identified places to put them.
I, I can tell you this, that the state is spending quite a bit of time to consider, not taking a lot of time, but they are putting a lot of effort into determining the need to bring in, whether it be RVs or what we call manufactured housing units and how that, how that will be done, if it will be done. And so they are submitting that request. FEMA is also looking at that. I'm actually part of the assessment team that's going around determining some of that. Right now, what we call direct housing or, you know, the manufactured housing units or the RVs, should they be used, has not been authorized in any part of the state, but it's not to say that it will not be later. What I would recommend, it would, well, what will happen is should that occur, that'll be very publicly disseminated. So they will, trust me, everybody will see the units coming in, there'll probably be news coverage associated with it. And then what will happen is people will be, would be contacted individually to determine whether or not they have a need for one of those. But right now, that's not a program that has been turned on.
And the state actually is the one that assesses that? I didn't, I didn't realize that. I thought that would be the FEMA and the federal government.
I am part of the, I'm, yes, FEMA does go and assess that, but the state submits their request to determine whether or not there's a need and I, I know the state's gonna submit a request for it.
Okay.
But for the most part, that has to go through, be evaluated. Our headquarters, actually FEMA goes up to there and they make a determination because it is a very costly venture and we want to make sure that there is a definitive need to be able to support that kind of mission and that there's not already available rental resources because we are providing individuals with, with rental assistance.
Let me interrupt you real quick.
Yes, sir.
Because I have a property management company and out of the 300 apartments or houses that we have before the storm, I had one vacancy and I've spoken to other agencies that are larger than me and I'm sure you've probably spoken with them too and their numbers were similar.
Right. And absolutely. And, and so that's part of what we do, our evaluation. We look at the available housing resources throughout the area and then based upon either the surplus or lack thereof, there may be, you know, that's where the, those decisions are made to say, okay, you know, this county needs to have direct housing, for example. We don't know that yet, so we're out doing that assessment, we're trying to pull that information together. And once that's done, then, like I said, those individuals will be reached out to individually.
Typically, how long does that take?
Honestly, I can't speak to it. It varies by disaster.
You've been in one of these before though.
I've been in several.
You can give us several weeks, months?
Again, it honestly, it depends on the, what the process is established.
Does it depend on how fast our state government operates? Because if that is the case, then we need to know that.
It typically will take, I can imagine that the, the process. It typically will take, I can imagine that the process to determine whether or not to turn on a direct housing program will probably be taken into consideration probably within the next month or two.
Okay. That's information that we need to know, so we can set people's expectations.
But I wanna caveat and say, I wanna manage expectations, although it could move much quicker. But I'd rather tell you a further out timeframe than...
But you can be our point of contact on this question, is that correct?
I'm sorry, no.
No? Okay, Maria.
She would be.
Okay, okay.
The only thing that we haven't covered so far, and it will be covered by the county manager later on, is the amount of debris that is out on our lawns and roads. So, he will cover that later on, I believe, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, we have someone from Public Assistance that'll talk a little bit about that, if you need anything.
Sure.
Okay.
So, for Hurricane Florence, the FEMA and the state have worked really closely together to develop a special policy so that private property debris removal, PPDR, is allowed in most cases. Now, this is, there's still very, a lot of caveats to this, so it is very important that if a housing authority or a gated community would like to participate in private property debris removal, if a community has a significant amount of private property debris removal, that we work very closely with your county emergency manager, who will put in requests to the state to get this approved. It is still a very touchy subject, because Public Assistance does not typically cover private property debris removal, PPDR, I'll shorten that. However, because of the intensity of Hurricane Florence, obviously, there are going to be an increase in the debris that's going to cause public health concerns, safety concerns, emergency route concerns, those are the things that would turn on the necessity to support that. So, there is a fact sheet, I'd be happy to send that out to Maria, who can send that out to disseminate it widely, to kind of outline how that would work. Bottom line is, we are supporting it, however, we want to work very closely with the county emergency manager and the state to make sure we're meeting all of those qualifications for eligibility.
We've already applied for that.
Perfect. Do you have questions specifically regarding debris?
No, I think that...
I do.
You do?
I want to ask a question we talked about. Has a decision been made on private roads, told we were gonna do it, do we have to get, release a liability from every owner on that road? Or are we just gonna go in and pick it up?
That's a good question on the every owner. I do know that the county would want to get approval, they need to be able to show that they have authority and permission to be on that road. Now, the way that we go about that, I'm actually not real sure what the process would be for the state of North Carolina, but I'm happy to look into that for you.
I can attempt to answer that. I believe Gene and I were just talking about this tonight, that the governor's already given that blanket approval.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, no one from DOT is here to check me on that, but we understand that's already happened, and we have a couple of checks and balances that we have to do locally, but that approval should be there.
So, the DOT will be removing that?
Not from a private road.
Not from a private road, but from a state road?
Correct. DOT will handle the public roads, the public state roads, and then the private roads will fall under our contract that the county has. So, I can't speak to what DOT is gonna do, but I can speak to the private.
Okay. So, there's no release of liability or no paper signing, is that what we're saying?
Only if it's gated, and that's the one that we're working on separately. That is a separate requirement, which we'll have, that process is already started. On the private road, yes, we've already, got the ball rolling on that.
Maria, I want to thank you very much. I also want to ask, that there are things that you need, that you come to us and you look to this board to be helpful to you. There are a number of us that are on this board that can get answers for questions or get people to move things done, to get them done as quickly as possible. So, if there's something that's holding you up, please let us know, and we can go to work to get things done for you as well.
I'm willing, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Do you have something?
We ran into some residents that had bags or trash, and there's been a little bit back and forth about whether or not it will be picked up, that it's bagged or not.
Yes, it's appropriate for residents to bag their debris, if they would like to, yes. They don't need to pull out of trash bags to get it picked up.
Okay, thank you.
Geez, I guess I could have had my Sunday night back.
Okay, let's move along now to the item number two. All right, let's take a five-minute break here. The agenda is...
Oh, we... You lost your...
Where'd my chief go?
Those three people.
We got a form.
Oh, you got a form, right? Got somebody from the fire department?
Stanley, do you see Chief Playlock anywhere? Have him come up.
Next is Department of Manners Emergency Service, EMS Grant Match, and Travis Bab...
Playlock.
Playlock.
Yep. Chief? Good afternoon, or good evening, how y'all doing? The audience kinda shrunk, but I don't say that personally. So, this grant we apply for, we apply for it typically every year, it's through the North Carolina EMS Rescue Association. We are eligible for this grant because we are a medium-duty rescue provider, that is a certification that the Department obtained above and beyond our North Carolina Department of Insurance Fire rating. In 2017-18, we applied for the grant to purchase 20 sets of turnout gear, complete sets, boots, pants, coat, hoods, helmets, gloves, and everything, it's about $2,500 a set of gear. Right now, we have 75 firefighters in our department, average lifespan for a set of gear for us is eight to 10 years, so we need to buy about seven sets of gear every 10 years, so we get about two and a half years' worth of gear through the grant. My request here tonight is to get $24,712.60 in matching funds for this grant.
Okay.
So, move for approval.
Hold it, man.
Mr. Chairman, may I recommend, since this was technically a last year's budget item, he is a year behind coming to request it, I would recommend the board that the fire, or this department keeps a amount of fund balance on our books, not his fund balances in his account. On our books, I would recommend, and the finance officer has a budget amendment, to take that from those account, from that account.
Okay. I think we've done that before in a couple situations, and I think that would be the right way to go.
It was with Vanceboro, you did that most recently.
Yeah, Vanceboro, right.
Second to the motion.
Question. Do they have sufficient amount that won't deplete them from...
Yes, sir, June 30th, they had roughly 60,000, so this will bring it into about 42.
This isn't money that the department, this is not, this is on our books for them to balance their account based on what taxes...
Understand.
So, they make sure they give them out they request.
So, that, the motion then would be for that to come out of the reserve, our reserve account?
From, out of the fund balance held on the county's books for this department.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, I read it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Department of Manners, Carts.
Good evening. The North Carolina Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division, or NC DOT PTD, has released the grant applications for fiscal year 2020. Each requires the opportunity for public input as well as a public hearing. Applications for these projects must be submitted no later than November 2nd, 2018. NC DOT PTD has specified that one combined public hearing be held if so desired. Carts will be asking for a public hearing to cover three grant application requests. The first grant application is the 5311 Community Transportation Program, or CTP, grant, and is a formula-based allocation grant for public transportation projects in non-urbanized areas. Carts relies on this grant to assist with the administrative cost of operation in the non-urbanized service area. The second grant application is a 5311 CTP operating grant. Carts is eligible to apply for this grant as an urban and rural split system. The total amount of the 5311 admin and the 5311 operating cannot exceed the total 5311 CTP allocation amount specified by the state. The 5311 operating would assist with expenses for non-urban transportation expenses such as dispatcher salary, driver's salary, fuel, et cetera, based on a cost allocation. These expenses are not allowed in the 5311 admin grant. The third grant application is the consolidated capital application. Capital projects are to be included in a consolidated application, which does not specify in which grant capital projects will be placed. This allows NC DOT PTD flexibility based on grant availability, and that determination is made at the state level. The capital purchases planned for fiscal year 2020 at this time are for the purchase of replacement vehicles and possibly two computers. The grant application information will be completed and available on the Craven County website no later than October 8th. Carts is requesting a combined public hearing be set for October 15th meeting regarding the grant applications that Carts will be requesting to submit to NC DOT PTD for fiscal year 2020.
Okay, so, board action is to approval to hold a public hearing on October 15th, 2000, that should be 2018, I believe, shouldn't it?
That's correct, sir.
2018, county commissioners meeting regarding grants request for FY 2019 to NC dot BPTD. I have a motion, so move.
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Now you have some information, George.
I do have some information. This is in regards to the Rural Operating Assistance Program, or ROP, which is a state-funded public transportation grant program that is administered by the NC DOT PTD. ROP consolidates the Elderly and Disabled Transportation Assistance Program, or EDTAP, for the rural and urban areas, the Employment Transportation Assistance Program, or EMP, for the rural and urban areas, and the Rural General Public Program, which is RGP, for the rural area, all into one application. Each county within the Carts service area is responsible for making a ROP application for its respective county. Craven County has been allocated $90,472 for EDTAP, $23,860 for employment, and $84,304 for RGP. These are the same amounts as last year, except for a $410 reduction in RGP. The RGP requires a 10% match, which is covered by fares that we charge to the passengers. A public hearing is not required to apply for this funding. In addition to the completed application, a certified statement signed by the county manager and county finance officer is required. And this is for the current fiscal year 2018-2019.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a moment of privilege?
Yes.
I want to tell you what a great job Kelly did during the hurricane. Some of the most complicated transportation activities I probably have ever witnessed before and after the storm, and she did it with grace and leadership, and she deserves all the kudos in the world.
When I went into that room, I don't think I ever seen her not there.
Yeah, she hung with us for seven days, through thick and thin, and she did a great job. I'm really proud of her.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ballroom manners planning, Y16 Flood Mitigation Assistance, FMA program, and that's Dunbar Gardner.
Yes, sir. We are in the process, we recently bid out a total of five repetitive loss structures, these are structures that FEMA has identified as structures that would be eligible to be considered for some type of assistance. In this particular case, the people applied for the process of having their homes elevated. The five of those structures were bid out, we ended up receiving a total of four contractors that are both local and from out of town, J.E. Dillahun Associates, Paul Woolard Construction, the IMAC Group, and Goose Creek Construction, those were the four bidders that bid. With regard to those four, four out of five bids, the lowest bid that was received was above the total amount of funding allocated for the structures. Therefore, we're recommending that four of the structures be rebid, notices of the rebid will be advertised and sent out, again, to the original contractors, as well as anyone else that would have an interest, again, in submitting a bid. As for the one unit, one of the units that came in within the budget, we're recommending a contract award with a contractor submitting the lowest responsible bid. The property is located at 911 Devers Avenue, that's in the city of New Bern. The group that is, was the lowest bidder is called IMAC Group LLC, in the amount of We, at this time, need a vote to approve the contract award in order to move forward with this particular structure. Again, this is money that comes from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Department of Flood Insurance, yes.
Okay, so move. We have a motion to approve, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm gonna ask a question about this afterwards, after it's approved.
Alrighty.
Still want time to run away.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second. Then, there's no discussion right now. Do I have a motion to, I mean, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the nays, the ayes have it. Now you can ask your question.
Mr. Mount Gardner, the folks that were here earlier said that $30,000, up to $30,000 could be made available to help raise a house.
Correct.
The number that we just approved here for the low bidder for IMAC Group for 911 Devers Avenue is for $96,000. So, does that mean that the person who resides at 911 Devers has gotta come up with $66,000?
No, this is 100, the particular program is 100% funded by the Federal Flood Insurance Agency. Therefore, the homeowner does not have to come up with any money. As a result of the, anytime there is a disaster, there's an independent group, it's called ICC, funding that allows up to $30,000 that someone can apply for through their insurance agent, go through their insurance agent, go through FEMA to receive that particular So, the balance of that funding would have to be borne by the property owners.
But this is a different program.
This is a different program, that is correct. This is what FEMA has as what they would term a long-term recovery program for properties that have been repetitively damaged, and large payouts and claims have been made upon those properties. And rather than continue to make those types of claims, they make this funding available to stop paying out those claims over and over again.
Yeah, pollution point is one of them.
Correct. We've had some in Fairfield Park, that is correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, getting back to Commissioner Tyson's question that he asked you earlier, you know, I mean, by raising this to whatever flood level that they're gonna raise it, I mean, is it, is it gonna be adequate for Hurricane Florence that came through, or, because I, let me just start this thing.
Sure.
I'm talking to a lot of Jones County people, that were elevated for Hurricane Floyd levels.
Right.
They're 14-foot in the air, it went three to four foot in the house now.
Correct.
So, are we getting back into the same situation here with some of these?
It could be very possible. The elevations are determined through the partnership with the state of North Carolina and FEMA, it's a joint project, they're the ones that provide us with the maps. When we do our initial reviews, and we did do some initial reviews on those maps and provided a lot of input, and since then, the maps have been kind of put on hold. We've not had any further conversation, other than they're saying they are looking at that. I think that they may delay the map implementation, because the, there's a lot of properties this time that were on the flood maps, that were elevated properties, and they got water in them. The houses that we had elevated... The houses that we had elevated, we only know of two houses. One was due to wave action, and the other one, we're not sure whether or not there was some components of the foundation that failed due to a wave or water pressure pushing against them. So most of them fared pretty well. Did it get close to them? You better believe it. It was right at their floors in some instances, and some, it was like within a foot of going in those structures. And we've not checked them. There's a hundred and thirty out there. We've not checked all hundred and thirty. We've just noticed as we were going through the hard-hit neighborhoods where we had had some elevations, we went by and we just looked at those to see what we experienced. So we did, in some instances, like I said, one or two instances where we had some problems, but it was due to things that weren't considered, like wave action. There was, you know, on the noose out there, there was probably times where there was, wind was blowing, and there were six and eight-foot waves on top of the floodwaters that were there, pounding one after the other.
And one of the problems with this flood mapping also was they didn't consider Irene in there.
That is correct.
In their calculations, and that should have been in there.
There are storms that weren't included, and we certainly have brought that out to the state, and some other communities have as well, so we will see what.
You know, when you're talking about this, a man came to me, and he said, "I think our water meters should be higher than what they are."
Electric meters.
And I said, "How high?" So he said, "Well, at least five to six feet higher." I says, "Well, the problem is, we don't know how high I is." I mean, if you take the storm in fifty-four, it was what, eighteen feet? Something like that? And this storm was thirteen feet?
I think the highest levels that we've kind of had in New Bern, stillwater elevations, has been somewhere around twelve feet.
Yeah.
And I'm sure there was areas this time, if you were in an area subject to wave action, you probably had more water than that. And then some areas along the Trent River, for whatever reason, they had some higher elevations than what we had down in this area here.
Steve was going up and down with his boat.
I think a fairly accurate estimate, Don, is going to be Davis Suggs' house. Because of where he's located, I think it's going to be accurate, a fairly accurate estimate. And I think it was probably eleven, eleven six, maybe there.
Mm-hmm.
And I say that because he's really on Lake Clermont.
Sure.
And Lake Clermont became part of the Trent Rivers through Scott Creek and maybe Mademoiselle Lane to some degree, but.
Trent River.
Yeah, I don't think you had any wave action there like you did in some areas, because it's.
Okay, we have a vote to approve the contract awarded as recommended in order to move forward with the proposed activities on this program. The motion?
I thought we did.
We did? Oh, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Got lost, though. Never heard. Department Matters Soil Conservation, two thousand eighteen stream debris removal.
I told Patrick earlier, he's probably going to be snagging creeks till he retires, so after this storm.
Good evening.
I think him snagging the creeks helped a lot.
We sure hope so. At least we've heard some of that.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to come in here and say, "I hate to crash the Florence party with a Matthew party," but that's what we were here, and Hurricane Florence has crashed our Hurricane Matthew party. We're going to start here. I figured, you know, picture's worth a thousand words, so if I give y'all a thousand pictures, I should be able to get out of here without saying anything. And the first thing I'm going to do is skip just a couple of slides. All right. These, this here shows what you're seeing. The creek shown in blue are the ones that we had under the Golden Leaf funding, and the one shown in red was under the state disaster funding. So this is what we were operating off of this year. Now, as far as what's being completed, state disaster, the areas in red have been completed. That's about twenty-three miles. The areas in blue still in process. They haven't been completed yet, you know, right? And then now Florence is hit, so it's kind of thrown us in a little bit of a, what do we do now? So it's still about twenty-nine miles of the state disaster areas. Now, the Golden Leaf projects, out of fifty-six point four miles of them were already completed, and we've got just a little section, about two and a half miles long, in Swift Creek that's left to be done from that. So that's where we'll start now. Unfortunately, it looks like Hurricane Florence has probably undone a lot of what we've done this last year. However, the good thing is, on the creeks that were completed, we were about as ready for this storm as we could be. And I'm going to go back now to my other pictures here. This is a section of Little Swift Creek, and this was taken the day before the hurricane, before Florence came. That's just an example of how good of a job he did. Now, this next picture was taken this morning, same area, same view. It's already filled back up, so, at least in that section. So that's an example of what we're going to be facing now. Now, the state, they're already asking questions. Tell us what you need. As far as, we need to reevaluate these things, and they actually wanted some of that due by tomorrow. Well, you know, today was my first day back in regular duties as not doing disaster supply and all that stuff. We told them, "I just can't meet that deadline by tomorrow." So they said, "That'll be fine. Get it to us just as soon as you can." So we're going to be working on that. So anyway, that's just an example of what we're facing out there right now, but we've already heard words from people that said, you know, the water came up, it flooded the road, but then it went right back out. So that's some of the good things. Now, we'll just flip through. Let's start right here. This is some examples of some of the work completed. Now, this one is in Upper Broad Creek, and it splits Craven and Pamlico County. This is a before shot showing the crew working, after shot. We're going to have several of these, before, after. And these are, these are some big logs. Now, we sat there and watched these guys work, and it, you really put it into perspective as to what they go through in trying to get these things out. So that's the before and after. Same thing, before, after. Now, this is in the upper reaches of Bachelor Creek. We didn't get many before pictures here, but you can see some of the areas that he's, he was working in, where he's cut some of the tops, some of the log ends. This shows you that we are out there working. Now, this is, this is some of the conditions. Just, that day was Jason Frederick and myself from the planning department, so we had to have a break. This was some rough, it was a rough day. This is an issue we see in Bachelor Creek. This is an infestation of non-native invasive alligator weed, and it is just about taking that creek over. Here's an example of us trying to get through it. Now, the creek here goes from here all the way over here. It should be one open body of water.
Wow.
But it's all alligator weed now. So that's something for the future, because alligator weed is such that if it breaks loose and floats downstream and catches on the bank, it'll sprout right there and grow there as well.
Is there a grant program for alligator weed?
There is. The state has a program for spraying, and some of the counties up in the northeast part of the state do that, and they kind of do a cost share program with the counties, where the county will go out and spray and turn in their receipts, and the state will give them back half of the money for the spraying. This is some more examples of trees, some of the things he was dealing with in Bachelor Creek. One of the aftershocks coming down. We try to get out there and look at every foot of it if we can.
Is this kind of south, I guess it would be, south of the Highway Seventy, or is this quick side of Seventy?
We're on both sides of Seventy.
Okay, so you're working both?
Yes, sir. We went from the, on Bachelor Creek, we went from the Jones-Craven County line all the way down to forty-three, where it crosses Washington Post Road, I guess is what it's coming.
Okay. About log, yeah. I did that creek one time kayak, and it was very pretty.
Well, last week, you know, two weeks ago, you could have went all the way through it, but I don't think I'll.
Yeah, I built with some beaver dams a couple of years ago when I did it.
And we're working on that, too, the other side of it, is the beaver trap. This is the guys working, this is in Fisher Swamp off of Little Swift Creek, and you can see this is hand labor. There's nothing glorious about this at all. This is where they came through a section of the creek, and they, sometimes they go through and they have to mark the channel, because sometimes water's high and they can't see it, so they can, they're going to mark it the best they can. Another example, just manual labor. This was, the name of the creek has left me, but it's right there off of Wildlife Road in Bridgeton, goes down through the river. Anyway, we went out to the river on it and worked. Now, this is an example. We won't show you all the good things, but there, we do come across problems out there sometimes. It's just like any other project, you're going to have issues arise, and we had one issue arise with one group of contractors, and they just, for some reason, they just could not seem to do what they were supposed to do. And this particular creek here, this is off of Core Creek, one of the branches that runs up to Asbury Road, and I had to go back that section out and drop that in the bottom of the creek, and it was hidden until the water went down and then it exposed it. So needless to say, this guy had to end up getting rid of this contractor, the guys that he had working. So that's some of the things, you know, this is the ugly side. We see it. Things don't always work right, but I guess what I want to focus on with you guys is that we hold their feet to the fire, and nobody gets paid until they do the job the way they're supposed to. Another example, this is where he's cut debris out of the, here's the stream here, and he's cut the debris. He's supposed to pull it back at least twenty feet from the bank so that it don't fall back in there. And you see, that's right on the bank. Now, it's one thing if this log was ten foot long and four thousand pounds, but this is firewood-sized stuff here. There's no reason why they couldn't have thrown that back. So, of course, we came back in, marked it with paint, and he called us up, and he said, "Okay, I've been back through there and I got it." And when I went back to check it again, here's the same logs with the same paint still on it. So, and there again, this is when the guy got rid of them and got another crew in. Joint effort between us and the planning department, this is Jason Frederick and Chad, got old Chad in the boat. I like to call this Lewis and Clark right here, so. So it is a multi-department effort. I hadn't got Don out there yet. I hadn't got him out there yet. I'm going after him as soon as I get Gene. All right, so now, they went through a creek one day. You know, this is, we were doing a hundred and eleven miles of creeks. That's a lot of stuff, and I can't cover it all, so that's why we send these guys in. And they went in, went through this creek, the guy said he was done, so they were going to go through and inspect it. They said, "No, he's not done." They started marking stuff, and two weeks later, you know, I get it with him, "Look, they've marked stuff, you need to go back through there and get it again." So two weeks later, he says, "Okay, I got it all out," and went in there. So me and Jason go back behind them again, and what do we find? There's the stuff with the same paint that was on there two weeks earlier. They have not been through. Same thing here, orange paint. And this is obvious stuff. You know, what I did is I take pictures of it and I sent it to the main contractor, and I said, "Look, here's what we found, the same stuff is still there." And we tell them, "Look, we're not nitpicking you. This is a whole log, and there's the paint, so your guys didn't go through there." Then again, this is the crew that ended up getting rid of them, so. But we held them to it. Same thing, just more stuff that they left, big logs right in the middle of the creek. So now, he gets rid of that crew and brings in another crew, and what these guys do is they go out here, not only did they go through there and get it, but they documented it with pictures, the before and the after, giving us the thumbs up, "We got it," you know. So this guy, and you see, he's, he's nearly neck-deep in that water right there.
Sure is.
There's nothing glorious about it. Same thing here.
How many snakes are you seeing in this?
I've got a section on that coming up. But to answer that question, one of the first days I went out, I lost count of the track of snakes. There were so many. Then there's days you go out and you don't see anything. Then there's days you go out and you see maybe three or four, but they're huge, like they're the big ones, that you don't want to step on. So anyway, they go through, like I said, that's a before and an after, showing us exactly what they've gotten. Now, this is, we're moving on now to the Golden Leaf project. This is, I think this one's Flat Swamp. This is two days before Florence, and so what I was focusing on here is you can see all the way up that creek, just as far as you can see. That's pretty work. He did good. Same thing, this is Core Creek. I personally have never seen Core Creek that low, where I was looking at, where I was taking that picture, and this was about two days before the storm. This is, this is Swift Creek. All right. Let me go ahead. Here's an example of a fallen, this is a root, the bottom of a tree that's blown over in the creek. So we'll be out there walking around, working, and what you don't see is, I want you to focus right here.
Ooh.
I'm going to zoom in on that just a little bit here in the next slide.
Snake or gator?
There he is. So, so you'll be standing there, working, looking, walking around, and you never see him until the last minute.
What is that? That's not a moccasin.
That is a cotton-mouthed water moccasin right there. Now, I want to show you, he comes down here, comes around here, wraps right on around in here.
Man, look at the bee.
You see this brown strip?
Wow, he is huge.
That, that's a telltale sign of a cotton-mouthed water moccasin right there, that brown stripe that runs right through his eyes, so. That's just your snake lesson for today. So that's one example.
You could have kept.
All right. So now, when me and Jason, that day, we had to stop and take a break, and we were sitting there, we got ready to go again, he got ready to grab his boat, and right in here, he got ready to grab it, and then certain words come out of his mouth, and he was like, "Man, there is a snake right there by my head." And you'll see, he's getting his phone right now to take a picture of that snake, and as he's talking, I look down, and in this bush right here, I want you to look right here. I never saw him. I'm going to zoom in on that a little bit here, too. Boom. There he was. And we've been standing there for ten minutes, never saw him. To the next one.
Gets out his phone.
Well, he.
He should be getting out his gun.
I know. Yeah, we'll cover that one in another meeting. Anyway, right here, this was a stopping point, and what you can't see, I mean, just innocent little nasty creek bottom, and right over in here, I'm going, I'm going to zoom in again here on this stump. All right? Still can't quite see him, but you're going to focus right in here, and I'm going to zoom in on him one more time. Boom, there he is. He's sitting there, ready, ready for business. But you see, that's where he's at. We walked around this area and never saw him, and then all of a sudden, you look over there, and there he is.
What is the contingency plan for a snake bite in a remote, I mean, how long does it take you to get from there to survival?
Well, see, now, this was where one of our problems, we were talking about it, and we said, you know, like that area right there, it took us a good hour and a half to get there, to where we're at. And you get bit by a snake, then you're supposed to not panic. How in the world are you supposed to do that? I mean, me and him have decided, you know, it's, sometimes you think it's just a matter of time before it happens. And I said, "Well, we're just going to have a little prayer session and get out just as quick as we can," so.
We ended up making provisions to get them a radio.
That's right.
That they can call for help and either get extracted in a helicopter or whatever method is the best for where they are.
That's right. We did, and I'm glad you said that, because I had forgot about it. That was one of the things, now, they have got us some communications that will work, whether we've got a cell phone signal or not, so. I still hadn't got the helicopter I've been asking for, but, you know, that eliminated a lot of it.
Blackout.
Uh, here's another example. Now, this was just a limb that we marked, because the whole creek channel comes from here to here, and all we really want them to do here is to trim out the limbs that's touching the, the water. Well, you see the paint right here? So you go up in there and put the paint on it, this is where they really get you. I'm going to zoom in on that limb a little bit. I don't know if you still see him or not. Right up in here, I'm going to zoom in on him one more time.
See him?
Boom. And there he is, from the head to the tail. But that's, you know, sitting back looking at it, you never see it till you roll up in there, and there he is, so. Uh, another big boy. That's Bachelor Creek. He was, he was growing. And that's kind of just a nutshell version of the stream debris.
How about the G-word? Do you ever see any of those?
I've got to go through my list of G-words.
That's not going to let for that one here.
Yeah, I have been looking, and I have not seen a gator yet. Now, one of the contractors told me, he has seen one in Swift Creek, just above one-eighteenth bridge, but I have not seen him yet. Hadn't seen Bigfoot, been looking for him, too, but, anyway, you know, lately, some of Hadn't seen Bigfoot, been looking for him, too, but, anyway, you know, lately, some of the contractors, they've been calling, "Hey, what's the deal? What are we gonna do about the new stuff?" And I said, "Well, right now, we're in recovery mode, and just stay tuned." But I know the state there are interested in knowing what kind of extra damage we've got, and I'd like to let them know, I'm not sure exactly how we're gonna evaluate it, but, so.
Well, you know, we put this program in seven years ago, and I think this has helped a lot, especially in Jason's area and my area, with Little Swift Creek and Swift Creek, and it's been a good program, and we want to thank you, Patrick, for what you've done with this, and getting us the right grants and the fund that we started for it, and the dangers that you guys face.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for the report.
All right.
Go. Okay, finance, human resources. Mr. Finance Director.
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners, we know what Patrick's request is gonna be like during the next budget session, lots of snake biting helicopter rides. At our last board meeting, it was discussed that staff would bring forth a plan to pay out overtime to employees who worked above and beyond their normal working hours as a part of the county's response to Hurricane Florence. The county so far has had approximately two hundred employees, who have incurred a total of eight thousand four hundred and twenty-seven overtime hours before, during, and immediately following the storm. Excuse me, this equates to approximately two hundred thousand dollars in benefits, in compensation and benefits. These were mandatory hours that were required to operate our EOC, the shelters and other facilities throughout these events. Currently, the county personnel policy provides employees comp time for the hours worked over forty in the pay period, instead of overtime compensation, and would require the board's approval in order to make this accommodation. At this time, management would like to request the approval from the board to compensate non-exempt county employees who incurred overtime as a result of the county's response to Hurricane Florence with overtime compensation instead of comp time. This would be limited only to overtime hours worked during the time period of September eleventh to October sixth. This overtime is currently a FEMA reimbursable expense that we would intend to go after through the PA program.
Okay.
Are there any questions available? Amber Parker, Human Resources Director is available?
Yes, I do have a question. Explain non-exempt employees.
Non-exempt employees would be employees that, through the Fair Labor Standards Act, are determined, they're paid on an hourly basis. So exempt would be salary employees like myself and the management team, so this would be limited only to those who are considered non-exempt hourly.
Any other questions? A motion?
So moved.
Second. Do we need a roll call vote on this? Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Appointments.
Nope, the mosquito spray.
What did I miss?
Spray.
Spray, mosquito spray.
Oh, yes, mosquitoes.
Good evening, gentlemen. All right, I come to you this evening to request a budget amendment for some special funding we received for mosquito abatement from the state in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And we have put together a plan that I think fits our county fairly well, it's a combination of things, from anything from larvicide to providing our municipalities with the chemical they need to do spraying, they say that they already have the equipment and the manpower. The municipalities use different chemicals, so we'll probably buy, or if they approve, purchase several different chemicals. I know that our county manager, Mr. Vibe, has been speaking with the city managers, and they seem open to spraying outside of their normal spray areas to cover some areas for us, and also building in two sprayers to set up some trucks that are already county vehicles, and basically, this is less expensive than totally contracting out, and also give us the capacity in the future in events like this, or others we may see necessary. So if you look at it in total, that portion of it, the larvicide, the material for the municipalities, the equipment and the material for us to locally contract, then you would probably have, I'm saying roughly, about forty-five thousand acres worth of aerial spraying as well, so it would be a combination of larvicide, truck spraying, and aerial spraying, and I would leave the selections for aerial spraying to the experts. I have an in-house expert with Ray Silverthorne, and I also have Mr. Jeff Hottenstein with Clark Mosquito Control, he's also been talking with us as well, and they both say that this combination plan of truck and aerial and larvicide would be a good way to approach our county. At this time, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, and have my subject matter experts here as well.
I would move approval with the budget amendment.
Yep, second. Okay, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, the larvicide, you're gonna spray a larvicide as well as the, what is the other one, the insecticide or whatever you call it?
The larvicide would actually do two things, in the mosquito dunks, and also some pellets that Mr. Hottenstein had told us about that last longer, basically for sixty days, I believe it is.
So, I mean, so it's not a spray, it's a...
That's right. And that's something that our water department staff could do when they're out in the field, and also some things that we can hand out to the homeowners for, you know, when they have standing water they just can't get rid of.
All right, and we had a pretty good in-depth conversation on mosquitoes last week, but anyhow, the spray, what is the communication between the spray that you put out, if it is hazardous to bees or any other species of, because, you know...
Birds?
Birds or anything else?
Mr. Hottenstein? My name's Jeff Hottenstein. Basically, when you're, what you're gonna do when you spray is you're going to target the Mosquitoes When They're Most Act, which is primarily after dusk and before daylight, so you're not gonna be spraying when the bees are mainly active. The product that we are recommending is a product called Duette, there is actually a recent study from Louisiana State University that was in cooperation with their Department of Agriculture, LSU, and the beekeepers and mosquito control locally in that area, where they devised a way of looking at mosquito control applications done on a regular basis to see if there was an increase in bee mortality in the hives locally, and what they found was there was no adverse effect or a larger increase based upon mosquito control activities in the Baton Rouge area of Louisiana, which is sprayed on a pretty regular basis, there's a lot of exposure, so that's the product that we're recommending for this. It also breaks down in about twenty-four hours, this is synthetic pyrethroid, it has an agitator called prilithrin that gets mosquitoes that are resting up and flying, increasing the basically overall effect by getting mosquitoes that would normally not be impacted by a spray up and flying, so that's the benefit of doing it that way.
Mr. Chairman, if I can follow up, so the mosquitoes that you're gonna be spraying near dusk, is that what you said? The mosquito species that are active during the day, does that impact them?
Yes, what'll happen is it will get them up and flying, there were studies done by Rutgers University that showed spraying even at 2:00 AM affected the Asian Tiger mosquito, which is commonly the most active daytime biter that you have. Obviously, cleaning up a property and larvicide-ing with the tablets or dunks in an area that would normally, that you can't tip over, like a rain barrel or something like that, is the best way, but a combination of the two would do that, and it would reduce the overall number of adults that would be bothering and affecting the workers trying to clean up, homeowners trying to clean up the property and the like. You know, right now, you're probably gonna be looking at anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five different species of mosquitoes coming off after this hurricane event, so you're gonna be looking at huge amounts, hence the aerial application in certain areas.
Mr. Chairman, you're saying that you only spray certain areas? Where you gonna spray it?
What, spray?
Yeah, you're saying some aerial spray?
Aerial spray, forty-five thousand acres is gonna be in areas that aren't covered by the truck spraying that's gonna be done? Am I correct?
So the municipalities would spray their municipalities, two contract drivers with these two sprayers we're gonna purchase with the chemical, would be out spraying the areas that the municipalities wouldn't buy truck, and then we're going to pick out forty-five thousand acres roughly to do aerial spraying where it really would make a whole lot of sense to do truck spraying.
So that means that you're not having trucks down in the hollow area, just aerial spray?
Not necessarily, there could be trucks as well.
I've spoken with, I mean, I don't wanna put any municipal on the spot, but I did talk to Havelock about spraying Harlow, and they've agreed in principle, we don't, I mean, we don't have an agreement with them, they've agreed to handle the roadside, but Scott, just like you're saying, there's some areas of Harlow that would be better served by aerial spraying, and some areas it would be better by truck spraying, and there'd be some areas where we'll use tablets as well as one of the other applications as larvicide.
And I think with this plan, that hundred and seventy-three thousand, we could get coverage throughout the county, everywhere.
When are you planning on starting this?
We would love to start it this week, if it gets approved.
Tomorrow would be better.
Yeah, that's, I know everybody, if everybody wants some relief, then I think we could definitely, if some things in place this week.
Okay, so I'll see somebody in the hollow area this week?
Hopefully, hopefully.
Good county there, fella.
Yeah, I know it's a big county. Everybody got, they don't have a fuse.
Ray has reminded me, we would also like for people in the area who would not like spraying to give the health department a call, and the people who would like spraying to give the health department a call.
Would like spray.
Yes, because that will help us in some of the FEMA reimbursement if we get to that stage, and so that's just basically calling the health department and giving us a yes or no, I think we'll get a whole lot of yeses.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Say what you just said again now, make sure that we understand it.
Yes.
To get the FEMA reimbursement, to ensure it, you need correspondence, is what you're asking for, is that what?
The more documentation, the better, and if we have documentation of excessive mosquitoes while people are trying to get back into their homes, work on their homes, that will also assist us in some reimbursement.
That's probably is the whole county.
You wanna say, this is on camera here, and there may be millions of people watching, you wanna say your phone number, so the public will know who to call?
Well, we give, do the main number, six-three-six-four-nine-two-zero.
What if we establish a Twitter handle for this particular issue, and we have people utilize Twitter to say that they need this?
We can add, or we can work with IP and how we set up an online database, which may even be better, because it would capture the actual address.
Oh, I thought we were gonna do this by community and municipality.
No, this is, well, yes, but this is to get the public input that Scott's looking for, and I'm just trying to figure out some way to quickly do this if we could.
Well, I still think it would have to be done by the community.
Let us put our heads together, I think there's a couple options, Scott's got a great team of PIOs and health educators that might have some great ideas on that.
I'm calling right now, so, you know.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. We need a roll call vote on this?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCain?
You know must say yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, now let's go to appointments. Pending appointments, Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, four vacancies, Emergency Medical Service Advisory, one vacancy. Do we have anything for the medical emergency? Nope. Nursing home, we have one vacancy, that's up to the card. Current appointments, Craven County Board of Adjustment, the board will be requested to nominate from MCAS Cherry Point zoning area and Craven Regional Airport zoning area. We discussed this at last session, but that was before the storm, I believe.
It was, before the storm.
And...
I do have one person.
You have one person?
Yes. And I think I asked Steve to get the other one, if he checked into it.
Which one?
George Liner.
Have you have an application for them?
That's the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't have my...
Well, Steve, you want to, you want, George Hallis since in Havelock, let him get the other one?
No.
Oh, okay.
The one you talked about.
I say that only because the airport is up in his district.
Yeah, you talked about...
Well, that's what I say.
One from him and one from down in...
Right, so I have mine, Robert Rose. We'll bring it back, they meeting.
Okay, thank you. And Steve will work on his.
Okay, yeah, I'll pick somebody.
Okay, and the next is upcoming appointments, so we're finished with appointments. County Managers Report.
Would you like the attorney to go first, sir?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
I got such a riveting report, I know you can't wait.
We got a cold session, too.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I actually have two items this evening, the first is in your agenda packet, the county has received an offer to purchase property that the county and the town of Dover own on 110 North Company Street out in Dover, this was the result of a tax foreclosure sale, the offer is for twenty-five hundred dollars, the tax foreclosure amount was thirty-nine-ten, and the tax value is ten thousand. This is the beginning of the process, the town of Dover has approved the offer, if the board approves it tonight, we will put the property out for bid and see what happens and bring back the final bid to you gentlemen for approval after the town of Dover has a crack at it, so assuming you would like to move forward, we would need a motion and a second and a vote to...
Do I have a motion? So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you. The second item, not on your agenda, but does involve the recent storm, as the board is aware, throughout Hurricane Florence and after the storm, the chairman entered a series of declarations of states of emergency, and those have been extended and modified throughout the process, the current state of emergency actually expires tonight at midnight, the last extension was, I don't know, a week or so ago, Jack, Tuesday. The board has two options, if you do nothing, the state of emergency will naturally expire and be over, although I think a second option would be good for the board, and that is to actually further extend the state of emergency, there are resources presently in the county and other items that are available to the county and the citizens which are contingent on a state of emergency. There certainly is no downside to continuing the state of emergency, I think my thought, and perhaps Jack's thought, is let's just continue it until the next commissioners' meeting, we can revisit it again, but that's probably a time that we could let it expire, we would really hate for the county or any citizens to miss out on any resources because we let the state of emergency prematurely expire, so it's my recommendation that you, by motion and second and vote, ask the chairman to extend the state of emergency until the next meeting. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, yays, have it.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity tonight, I normally give you an update of my two-week agenda of meetings I've been to and things like that, I'm sorry tonight, it's gonna be mainly Hurricane Florence, and I wanted to update you on where the county's at, different programs we have going on, and some statistics and things I find interesting that you might want to know. The first thing I'll start with is, we mentioned tonight, and I'm gonna hold it up for Bob, we do have the FEMA line that was mentioned to the board, it is still active, and you still need to register if you've not done so, it's a very important asset on getting... It is still active and you still need to register if you've not done so. Uh, it's a very important asset on getting, uh, citizens' help. You heard from the FEMA folks, so I'm going to go light on that. I don't think you probably need a, anything that I could give you there. Um, second, I want to talk to you about damage assessment. We are rapidly, um, close to finishing that, if not already finished at the end of the day. I did receive a final report or a final report for the day. Just to give you a perspective, this would be the county assessment along with the city of New Bern, which will give you the whole countywide damage. We've had to merge those two together. As of now, three hundred and one commercial structures received damage at a tune of thirty million, one thousand dollars. We had a total of four thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight residential structures at this time that are reported to have damage at a total of one hundred and sixty-five million, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. For a countywide total of all structures, four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine, one hundred and ninety-five million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars.
What was that last figure?
The last one was forty, what, Jack, forty-nine?
Four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine total structures, both commercial and residential. Total of one hundred and ninety-five million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. That is a astounding figure to me, quite frankly. Um, and I, I don't believe that's a, a whole picture yet. I'd like to see the end of today. Obviously, I didn't get today's. This was about noon time when I got this report. I suspect we'll be right at the two hundred million plus, uh, perspective countywide. So I think the needs there, you guys have been out in your communities. I've, I've seen you, I've been out with you. It's hard to describe what folks are going through and what our county looks like, but there, there are some positives, uh, I'm seeing too. So that's certainly keeping me, uh, on the right path. So I want to talk to you a little bit about debris pickup. Um, we do have two sites currently open. We call these DMS. These are sites that are mainly for the governmental units and the co- uh, commercial contractors. Those are at Creekside Park and at the old Craven Thirty site, which I've been told is now should be referred to as the West New Bern community. Uh, Warehouser was very generous to the county to allow us to use that site. Uh, I'm very thankful for that because we, we had a site at International Paper near the factory, uh, up on, um, Warehouser Road and we, we unfortunately couldn't come to terms on that, but, but Warehouser stepped in and, and did what they did for us. Uh, Gene had some updated figures this afternoon. Those sites are being well-used. If you happen to ride by, you'll certainly see a mountain of vegetative debris. It says vegetative only at those sites. Our seven convenience site locations have, uh, maintained, uh, additional days and hours over the last two-week period. We had referred that to you and some of our briefings we had, some of our emergency meetings we had, or excuse me, special call meetings we had last week and the week before. Um, I went and visited a couple of the sites and I know Gene's visited some and I'm sure you've visited some. They, they were certainly overwhelmed with the response of materials they received, particularly on the C and D side. Um, at Minette's site on Saturday, it was certainly, you could, you could barely find the box. I mean, it was mounted up. Our contractor's doing a good job when we, we ramped the site down at the end of the day, starting to pack that material into boxes and work it as close as they can. We're certainly getting a lot of white goods, scrap metal, uh, trash, recyclables, the whole nine yards. I mean, the sites are certainly being well-used, uh, and we think that'll continue for some time, uh, to do that. The board did choose to waive, uh, for household solid waste, basically everything in a white bag through the end of the week, uh, of the trash ticker program. That is not being accepted at this time. After Friday, it will certainly start back. We think by that time everyone should have cleaned out their fridge and, um, had that material either in their normal trash can or at the site. I am pleased to report that all the household municipal solid waste routes are being ran. Uh, they started last week and as of today, the recycling routes are being ran again. And a lot of folks, there was some confusion about why recycling wasn't being ran. It's because the factory or the MRF, as they're called, the sorting facility was damaged in Jacksonville, had no power. That site was brought back up late last week and this weekend and they are, um, certainly collecting materials and being able to take them. They are a contractor. Uh, let's see, contractor pickup, our contractor Phillips and Jordan is out. There are quite a few municipalities that have partnered off of, um, our contract that are receiving those services. As I mentioned earlier, when the FEMA folks were talking, uh, DOT will have a contractor to pick C and D and vegetative and, uh, white goods appliances from the state right of ways. We will cover everything that's on a private road. Uh, we are asking for Fairfield Harbor and are close to that decision to, to go into the gated community and take care of that. And we're also, you'll see your municipalities using our contract to pick up in their areas. I know I've seen pickups in Riverbend, uh, New Bern, Trent Woods, I believe in the town of Vanceboro are, had a, had a pickup there, so we'll mention that. Um, so I'll, I'll stop at that. Are there any questions on debris? I know that's something you're probably getting a lot of feedback from.
There are going to be.
Go ahead.
Are there going to be multiple passes through on debris?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They're flagging things as they go along. They pick it up, then sending their runners back to take another look, so. And we're also monitoring that as well.
There was a lot of leftover stuff.
Right.
So I guess we'd be in time to try to gather it into a larger pile again.
Yes, sir.
And make it easier for them to pick up.
Absolutely. And I, I've had to tell folks, and I know there's angst about the, the pile of debris in front of a person's home. Uh, this is certainly a marathon, not a sprint. The degree of debris, both C and D and vegetative is overwhelming in our county. I've been in most of the areas. I mean, I, I know the need. I think what'll help a lot will be when DOT gets out and starts picking up the right of ways. That's something that hasn't been done yet. Uh, as far as I understand, Mr. Gray, to your gene, I believe they're working on a contract. Should be pretty, getting pretty close. I think there was. Okay. At that, any other questions on debris?
No.
Okay. County building update, uh, remediation process is ending. We have done some emergency things to our buildings, just like a lot of people are doing their homes. We've had remediation companies in. Almost when the wind quit, stopped blowing, uh, they were there on site. First project was pumping out the Sally Port underneath the emergency operations center. That was certainly something we didn't anticipate. Uh, I can tell you, uh, from being in the center that night, it was awfully eerie watching the river come through. Uh, I should see Chairman Mark shaking his head. That was a bizarre experience. There's a lot of lessons learned. One of them's that the fuel pump for the generator shouldn't be in the Sally Port. That's how you get fuel to the generator on the roof that runs the building. So we, we, uh, had a lot of excitement with that. Um, I'll, I'll just start with the biggest fix and go to the smallest. The convention center, as you're well aware, is fenced off. That's for the safety of the public. We are, uh, finishing remediation there. It did sustain substantial damage. Uh, my estimate's twelve months plus on recovery. I would like the board to consider at this time, while we've already had to tear out most of the carpet, if not all, and most of the sheet rock, it would certainly be a good time to readdress the floor situation, uh, the settlement issues that we've had for some time. Mr. Hodges is working on a proposal to get a, uh, engineering firm in to take a look. We probably need to do another scan to see exactly what we have. I'll probably bring something like that to your next meeting, so you can consider that. A scan is a starting point because it shows you where we were after we finished the project and where we are now, so we can compare the settlement there. Uh, Mary Harris and her team has worked, uh, Mary McGee and her team has worked very hard on talking to our clients. Just today, we, we've spoken with the TDA. Uh, they want to take a role in trying to help, uh, clients who may not be served by the convention center find other venues. I think that's a great role for them. Uh, they're excited about that. Mary will be working closely with their executive director who's just coming on board. Sort of work in partnership to, to find other locations and really help our caterers and partners out that have been there with us the whole time to make sure, uh, they have a chance at that business. Uh, county admin building, you're here tonight. You see that there's quite a bit of extra materials in the hallways and it's a little warmer than it should be. We did suffer because of water, some HVAC unit failure. Uh, we do have portable units in that's keeping it bearable for us to be here. Um, and that's, you know, a month's long process to replace those units. Both of them just happen to be relatively new. We had replaced one of them a couple of years ago and one of them last year. So one of them's under warranty and one of them's not, so we're certainly working with insurance and things like that, um, to bring those units back on. Otherwise, this building had some, as you see, there's a piece of sheet rock out there, ceiling tile over there, little onesie-twosie type things, um, but those are being remedied by our maintenance department. There are a couple of offices down in the finance department that are going to have to receive a more extensive, um, remediation along with an office in our elections, uh, department. The USC courthouse I referenced to you earlier, we did receive some significant flooding in the first level, which is the Sally Port and the basement of the old courthouse. Um, that is a, a large fix. We did, um, have some trouble with the elevator there that transports folks from the Sally Port up into the building. That is a long-term fix based on parts. We are, uh, working with the sheriff's department on that. We know that's a priority for them and, uh, we will try to address that as, as we move forward. As I mean, I mentioned the fuel pump to you, uh, when the mitigation guy was there, I, I wanted to ask him if that would be the first project that we work on, moving that somewhere outside of the Sally Port because that is a essential part of our operation. We also have a magistrate's office in that area. It received extensive damage. Those folks have relocated out to our Clark's Road facility, uh, indefinitely until we can, uh, resolve that issue with them. Clerk of Court Records Room received damage. We helped with the remediation of files that were located there. We feel very strongly that we were able to save all the documents. There, there was a process which they had to be treated. And there's also two sets of, uh, bathrooms there that are going, that are closed right now to the public and they're using other additional restrooms in the facility. And lastly, the HVAC units, heating and cooling, things that were in the Sally Porter and areas on that first floor are having to be remediated, so we're working along on that. Havelock magistrate's office, we thought initially there, there may have been water in. It doesn't seem that it was that bad. However, there are some roof issues there that we're addressing. You know, that holds a DMV office, a magistrate, social service, uh, employees. Um, so we're working on that. And then finally, just broad-based, there's miscellaneous repairs at all our county facilities, you know, against ceiling tiles, windows, things like that, um, that we're, our maintenance staff is working very hard to bring back. It's uncomfortable in places where you may have, you know, a piece of a wall missing, but we're working through and, and, and trying to work together to get that done. I am getting some reports about the New Bern library. Uh, I'll be speaking with Commissioner Dacey since he serves on that board, the work of the library, and there are some issues there that we need to consider. Uh, so I'll, I'll just follow up with you at the next meeting on that. Um, so that's all for county buildings. Any questions on that part? Okay. Shelter, we are down to one shelter and I want to thank the city of New Bern for allowing us and working with the Red Cross to use the West New Bern Recreation Center on Pine Tree. Uh, Commissioner Tyson and others have been by there. I was there over the weekend. Uh, great group of folks in that shelter, uh, great attitudes. These are folks who've been in a shelter, some of them for pushing three weeks now. Um, certainly, anything that the community does for them is appreciated. Uh, I can tell you that they really enjoy, uh, those type of things. I got, I do have good news to report. Red Cross has been working very closely with the tenants in the shelter and we are now down to seventy-five folks in that shelter from, uh, a hundred and forty just a couple of nights ago. What the Red Cross does, they come in with caseworkers and individually work with each citizen that's in there, try to work on a plan to some more permanent temporary type housing. Uh, so they've been successful, um, down to seventy-five. I will tell you, the high point was sometime on Friday, immediately following the storm, we were, uh, over fifteen hundred people that we were sheltering. So roughly, uh, one percent of our population was in a county shelter, put that perspective for you. Uh, let's see, FEMA, we talked about that. I do want to give a few more specifics on a couple of things. We do have a disaster recovery center open at the old Rite Aid building on DeGraff and Reed Road, beside McDonald's, close to the Piggly Wiggly. Best way to describe it, uh, in the V between.
Give way to steer people there.
They are, um, open. They have a lot of staff. Gene and I went with them before they opened and did a briefing. Uh, great bunch of folks, most of them ten, fifteen years' experience. Some of them just coming from Hawaii from the volcano issue they had there. Uh, lots of different resources, as you saw tonight, just the, the folks that were here. A lot of different things that citizens can, can, can take advantage of there. Uh, that is open nine AM to seven PM, seven days a week. So that facility will go on to further notice. I got word Commissioner Liner, uh, Commissioner McKay, at five PM today, the, uh, the Havelock site has been approved. Commissioner Liner might have to give, get you to give me a better description of what that building's called. It's a.
The whole, the old Havelock Auto Sales.
Right near Slocom Gate.
Right, right, right across from Slocom Gate.
Okay, that facility was approved.
You gotta go up to Wendy's at that light, make a right-hand turn and then make another right-hand turn, come down the service road.
Okay.
Always the end of the service road.
There are some modifications the county will be required to make to meet FEMA guidelines for ADA. Uh, Gene has already got that list and he'll be working on it first thing in the morning. I understand that once they give the approval and we get started work, they'll start mobilizing to come and that'll put, take some pressure off the New Bern facility and also allow for the Havelock and Harlow communities to have a site closer to them, so excited about that. Uh, again, I, I can't say enough, um, and I'll hold it up one more time. Uh, folks still need to register online. That is the most important step. I know a lot of folks have done it and I know there's been denials and things that have happened once they've had that first, but, uh, again, I'd point you, just like they did, to the DRC for more in-person help with those claims. Okay. Court system reopened on last Thursday. Um, as I mentioned, there was some damage to the courthouse. We worked closely with both the judges, Terry Sharp, our district attorney, and we really had a coordinated effort. I want to think those folks should be patient with us so we can prepare their building for the public. I think it's very important to have the court system back open. I'm sure like the commissioners do, uh, we need to transact business in this county and that was certainly a big step forward. Um, social services, the emergency food stamp program, the DSNAP, was authorized and began last Friday. Uh, it did run Saturday. It took Sunday off and started back this morning. I do not have a report from them today. But as of close of business Saturday, they'd seen over twenty-one hundred folks come in that facility. It's over, you know, roughly a thousand fifty a day. Our highest day during Hurricane Matthew was five hundred, so we doubled Matthew two days in a row. But again, this is a much different storm than Matthew with a much wider net, uh, for that. Uh, folks who are currently on food stamps had, um, already had an allotment added to their program. This is for folks who do not have food stamps, that might have different criteria. And you heard from DSS folks last Tuesday, explained that to you. I won't, I won't go into a lot of detail with that. Uh, we did run a pod system logistics program. That ended late last week. I think it went very well. I think commissioners were involved heavily in those pods in your communities. I think we met the need, uh, basic essentials for what folks need to sustain their life while they were in an emergency. I want to thank all the folks who donated, all the folks that volunteered. I, I mean, it was really a, a community effort and I was awfully proud, uh, when I visit those sites to see that, that work together and, um. And there was a couple of staff, uh, Mr. Baker, Pam Hawkins and Abigail Wilson, our Canonville apartment. It really took that on and did a great job with it, so I want to thank them for that. Schools update, uh, Dr. Doyle was here tonight. I wish she could give this because I'm, I'm not nearly the right person to do it. I did receive the same email and saw the same Facebook post that you saw. There are some limited staff, uh, going back to work, uh, different times this week. It's projected students will start back October eighth. I, I, I'm saying projected because I haven't heard of, for sure. I know she did post that, but, um. We'll certainly follow up with her and make sure we can do whatever we need to help her, uh, get back there. Uh, the school system is gracious, uh, to allow us to use five schools as emergency shelters. Um, I've talked with her about some of the remediation efforts that went forward. And I also think, uh, it would be something we need to consider from her at those costs of what she has to do to clean those schools up after that. So I don't have anything from her at this time, but would like to bring that to you at another meeting. Okay, so that's sort of my hurricane, uh, update there. If there's any subjects I didn't cover, I'd be happy to do that now.
Any questions?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, you brought up damage assessment.
Yes, sir.
You said the county and New Bern are tied together.
Mm-hmm.
Now, what about, what do you, what do you mean for the county? I mean, have you been down in the Harlow?
Yes, sir.
Is Havelock's reporting to you?
I have Havelock's in ours. New Bern uses a little bit different system.
And that's in, in this, these totals?
Yes, sir.
So all of these totals you have here?
Correct, that's correct. This would be, the county wide totals is, is everyone, correct? Okay.
It's everyone, okay.
Yes, sir. I, I had a couple of additional items, if you don't mind. I'm sorry to keep you. I know it's been a long meeting. Uh, we do have a work session scheduled for October fifteenth. You know, it's been a tough couple of weeks. I would certainly like to spend more time with the items, uh, that we were going to talk about that day. I, I'm just going to be honest, I'm, I'm not prepared to do so. I would ask that you consider having a special meeting on October twenty-second, which is a Monday at eight-thirty, um, to accommodate that. I, I think I need the extra week with staff to, um, pull that together.
October twenty-second, is that a problem for anybody? Is it October fifteenth, twenty-second?
It was scheduled for the fifteenth after our commission meeting. I'm just, quite frankly, not going to be ready for it.
It's a Monday.
Yes, sir. I tried to.
Still have the meeting on the fifteenth, but we have a work session on the twenty-second and you'd like to do that at eight-thirty?
Uh, if that's okay with the board. And some of those issues, we need to readdress. Some of the things we were planning on talking about have certainly changed based on what we've been through. I'll, I'll be happy to have Naan pull you tomorrow and email you and.
I'm good. I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. And, and I want to leave with two final thoughts. One is, I, I don't want to lose an opportunity to give you some good news. We were approved for a one NC grant for Project Grouse on September eighteenth in the middle of our recovery. And what that means for our county is over two million dollars in investment and thirty-three new jobs. If there's ever a time we needed it, it was now. So I'm, I'm really pleased. McGuckin and Pyle, the company from Pennsylvania, there was a couple of articles in the paper. I'm sure most people were looking at all the other articles, but I, I think that shows the resiliency of our county. Those folks in their article talked about wanting to be a part of the recovery, what the county had done and, and selling them on what a place this is to live and have your business. And I think that meant, meant a lot to me and my staff to, to see that announcement. I want to thank the state for approving, uh, financial package for them to make it happen, along with county commissioners who, who started that, that a couple of weeks ago. So I want to make that announcement to you. If you have any more questions about, you know, um, there was, there was supposed to be a formal thing and it, it just got wiped out because of what we were doing. Lastly, um, I can't call, uh, each employee by name, but guys, we got a great group of employees who, uh, really stood out and I'm proud of each and every one of them and, um, I appreciate what you did. And I appreciate what you did tonight for them, and I appreciate what you do every day for them. But we are blessed in this county with people who care about this county, who want to see it succeed and want to see it be the best it can be. So I'll leave you with that thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we go into closed session, I just want to thank this gentleman here who was our protection tonight from the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And at the same token, I'd like to, I think it would be a good idea that if we let our people know to watch Channel Ten, and they can get a lot of the information that was given here tonight by the FEMA people.